Fantastic. Thank you, everyone. We'll now call the October 15th Lane Community College Board of Education Work Session to order. Nicole, will you please call the board?
Kevin Al Tucker.
Here.
Austin Fullniggy.
Here.
Amelia Hampton.
Here.
Jesse Maldonado.
Jesse is excused.
Thank you. Steve Metall.
Here.
Zach Mulholland.
Here.
Jerry Rust.
Here.
Julie Wiesman.
Here.
Excellent. Next, we will do the land recognition. The land recognition will be read by Daniel Brown. Daniel, thank you for doing this.
Yeah. I'd like to start our meeting with the acknowledgement that the land we are on is the traditional homelands of the Kalapooia people. The Kalapooia were stewards of this very land for over 14,000 years before their traditional way of life was forever disrupted. We start our meeting with humility and reverence for the original inhabitants, the Kalapooia.
Thank you so much. We now move to the adoption of the agenda. I will need a motion in a second for the adoption of the agenda today.
I move to accept the agenda.
Julie makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. As we moved in seconded, all those in favor of the adoption of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on, we're going to go to the equity lens. Again, these equity lens questions are really important, especially during decision-making processes. One air question I want to bring up from the equity lens is how can we create a space of healing reconciliation to transform structures, environments, and selves? I think that's really relevant to the conversations and the topics for later today. We now have responses to the information requests. Any questions, comments in regards to the information requests? All right, seeing none, we will now move on to our discussion items. The first one is in regards to coverage of exposure review brought to us by OSBA PACE. Dr. Bolger.
Yes, hello, everyone. I'd like to introduce Jens Jensen with OSBA. And Jens, we're going to turn it over to you to introduce yourself and get us started with this presentation. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Make sure that I'm close enough that everybody can hear. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Yes, my name is Jens Jensen. It's on my birth certificate. It's on my driver's license. My parents were having fun with it, I suppose. And I am actually with a company called Special Districts Association of Oregon. We are the, there are three main trusts that serve public entities in Oregon. Special Districts Association of Oregon, PACE, Property and Casualty for Education, and then City County Insurance Services. Out of those three, I'm the director of claims for two, PACE and Special Districts. In our Special Districts Trust, you probably all here as residents of Lane County at least, you probably know things like Lane Transit District. Those are public entities, small local governments, and we handle the liability claims for them. So anytime you hear anything like that, that you'll know that one of my people is handling the claim on behalf of it. I've got a team of nine, and they handle every single claim that comes through the door. I assign it to them. So when you send a claim off to PACE for handling, it comes to me, and I'll pick the person to pick it. My team has got probably the most experience in handling public entity claims anywhere. It just through the amount of time. My longest served tenured employee right now has been with us for 17 years. I've been with PACE and Special Districts now for 21. So I was actually around before PACE started, so I've been here from the inception. I'm not sure how long you've all been with Lane, but some of the claims I handled early on were with a gentleman named Dennis Carr. And so we helped out the college then, and now I really appreciate the opportunity to come back and speak with you. I think I did this presentation about 12 years ago, but none of the faces look completely familiar. So if you were, I apologize, but that's where we're at. So what I was hoping to come to talk to you about tonight, and again, at PACE, we really put a lot of emphasis and effort into claim prevention and loss prevention. It's one of the hallmarks of our special districts, claims that we've been handling for a long time. We have a team of some eight risk managers that specialize in different things to help out and keep those losses down. Because in a self-insured pool like PACE's, the cost of your coverage that you pay for in the form of those contributions is directly related not only to your loss history, but also to the trust's loss history. And so we try to keep those claims as economical as possible to try to keep those costs low for you and to try to continue to maintain providing coverage and providing service and support. And I can't say this enough, if you have a question with regards to some kind of risk management, please, please, please call us because we like to try to get in front of things and be proactive as opposed to reactive. And so that's why I also appreciate the opportunity to come down and speak with you. So now we'll talk about the most boring thing on the face of the world in the earth, insurance coverage. Oh, my God, what a snoozer. Luckily, I think the presentation after me will be a much better presentation than this because it'll be a lot more, it'll be a lot more entertaining, but I'll try to make it as entertaining as possible. So one of the things, and if you can go ahead and advance that slide, that'd be great. One of the questions I hear constantly, all day long, and if I had a nickel every time I heard it, I would not be working here. I'd be, I'd be very well, very well off. Am I covered? One of the biggest questions we always hear, am I covered? And the answer to that is, roll call, or next, it depends. And I really wish I could give you a solid answer on that, but the fact of the matter is, I just can't. But every time you present a claim to us, understand that that review, regardless of whether or not I have coverage for it or not, don't ever be afraid to send something in. When you get to the point of something where you come down to the question of who is going to pay for this, that's the time to give me a shout. I can't always guarantee that I'm going to have coverage, but as a self-insured trust, as a self-insured risk pool, we have a lot more width and breadth with regards to the things that we can cover and with the coverages that we provide than your traditional big box insurance coverage. And so when it comes down to that, I just beg, I just beg, please give us a call, please give us a chance. Don't worry about rates or premiums or anything like that going up just by asking the question. If I can't cover it, no harm, no foul, and I'll say very sorry. And even if we can't answer the question, or even if we can't provide that coverage to you, we have so many different resources available to us that there are some times where I may not be able to help out with coverage, but I may know of certain other things that can help you out through a situation or suggestions of counsel to call regarding a particular exposure that we may not actually cover. So we just beg and beg and beg, please give us a call. We're here for you. You are literally owners of PACE as a member, and so I work for you and I work at your beck and call. Please give me a chance to try to see if we can help out with something. A whole lot easier if I'm on board at the start than if I have to come in at the end of it or midway through. So just beg, 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 please give us a call. This is what I do. I don't, you know, for claims that we handle, there is no financial incentive for me other than the fact to try to keep those claims as low as possible, keep that coverage as low as possible for you, and still get through things because there are a lot of times where we will make a determination or a decision that may not be necessarily that you have a legal obligation to make that resolution or to make that thing happen, but it might be a smart thing to do. And not always do we look at something with regards to just a flat legal aspect of it, of are you actually liable for something that took place? We're looking at it as to what's the good resolution? What is the smart resolution here? Because all of you as board members, you're out in society. And so if we have a situation where one of the buses or one of the cars hits a person, or maybe they don't, and we don't really know for sure, we can't really tell how the accident took place, we can't really determine that liability. But keep in mind, that person who is driving that car, they're also a member. They also may be a patron. They might even be a student here at the college. And so it might be smart to try to help them out a little bit. And that's one of the things that we have where it's not just a straight, oh, we don't know, we can't determine the liability, flat out deny the claim. You're going to see that a lot in big box insurance. I know, I used to do that. And so that's why we say give us a call because not necessarily is the legal obligation, it's not necessarily the smart obligation, and sometimes we take a look a little bit deeper into that situation, find out if it's actually a good choice to maybe try to help somebody out or help them through a situation. Not every time, not every single thing, but we'll take a lot of things into account. And we really want to look at all sides before we make that really hard decision of just telling a person, no, there's not going to be any help for you. So when you ask me, am I covered? I'm going to tell you, it depends every single time. So but please keep on trying to give me a call because I'm more than happy to take a look into the situation and see what we can do to try to help out. And if you could advance the slide, that'd be great. Oh, that was part of the joke. There was a lot more, there was a lot more description there than I had planned on. I was going to say it depends, and thank you. Drop mic. I'm on my way down. So that was, that was it. So tonight, what I'd like to talk about, a little bit about the tort claims act, a little bit about what we're seeing as exposures, a little bit about liability coverage in general, just to try to get a little closer to turning that it depends into yes, we're covered. And then also ways to find yourself outside of coverage because, again, we put such a strong emphasis on on claim reduction and then also on claim prevention. When it comes down to it, if there is a claim, if one of you are named, I want to make sure that I can provide you with coverage. I want to make sure that we can pull you under the wing, pull you under that umbrella and keep you, keep you covered just because it's a whole lot easier to have friends as opposed to enemies. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we want to try to put on presentations like this. So go ahead and advance. So who is covered with your PACE liability coverage agreement? Well, it's the named participant, and I wrote the district, in this case, it's the college. I give this presentation too for a lot of our special districts. And then each of the following folks, while acting in the course and scope of their duties, and that's going to be a big word here, course and scope, a big phrase. So some of the people who are covered, in addition to the college here, are the directors and officers. That's you folks up there. You're actually a part of it. And then the employees, all of the staff and all of the admin staff and all of that. And then agents, now this is a little bit tricky because they have to be in the course and scope of their duties again. Here comes that phrase again. And then volunteers, people who are doing things on behalf of the college. And when it comes to the Oregon Tort Claims Act, go ahead and advance the slide. When it comes to the Oregon Tort Claims Act, it's not like we can pick and choose whether or not that we provide that coverage to those four different groups of folks. Now, actually, under the Oregon Tort Claims Act, the college actually has that obligation to defend and indemnify you for the torts or any tortuous or any wrongful acts that you may commit in the course and scope of your duties. But you exchange that liability, you trade that liability to us in exchange for your contribution, in exchange for that coverage agreement that we provide back. So ultimately, the college still has that ultimate responsibility, but they trade that to us, they send that over to us to administer those kind of claims on your behalf. So starting out with a tort, no, it's not a delicious dessert. A tort is a wrongful infringement or a right that could lead to a civil legal liability. Go ahead and advance.
Oh, really quick, would you like questions during the presentation or after?
Oh, yes, very informal. Sorry, I should have said that. If you have a question, please just shout it out. I love to be informal. It's actually very difficult here as I sit at the table. I'm used to wandering around, so. But yes, please, absolutely informal. If you have a question, please ask, please ask.
Absolutely.
Any questions? Good stopping point for questions if there is any.
Very briefly, board members would fall under the agents side for, under officers and so forth?
No, officers, actually. Yeah, yeah, under, under our definitions in the coverage agreement and then also under the Oregon Tort Claims Act. You guys are officers.
Yeah, gotcha.
Agents are more people who do things on your behalf. And really, that gets close to volunteers as well too, but agents are a little bit closer relationship to the college. People that you tell, that you ask them to do, sometimes that can be just for short durations. If you, if a, if you've sent maybe one of your spouses off on an official thing, you know, hey, go down and, and, you know, they don't really have a volunteer status, but you're, have some kind of a presentation going on here. And you ask one of your spouses, hey, we need an extra two liter of soda. Can you go down to the store? Well, during that little course and scope right there, they're actually acting on behalf of the college. And sometimes even the students with regards to if they are representing the school as they go out to a conference or to a sporting event. They can actually sometimes be considered agents as well too.
Gotcha.
So.
Very good. Thank you.
But yeah, no, good question, though. I appreciate that. So go ahead and advance if you wouldn't mind. So when it comes to liability, our first review of the things that we're going to take at, take a look at with regards to is there liability when a claim is presented to us? And as a public entity, the way to bring a claim against a public entity is under the premises of the Oregon Tort Claims Act. It starts out at ORS 30.275. If you need to fall asleep, read it through. But if not, send me a note and I will help understand it, help you understand it. But that Oregon Tort Claims Act comes after a long time of the law in Oregon being known as what is sovereign immunity. So basically, a public entity is sovereign immunity, the easiest way to explain that is a concept of the king can do no wrong. And up till 1969, as a public entity, it was impossible for a person to bring a claim against a public entity. Couldn't do it, and it didn't matter for any reason. So along about 1969, there was a gentleman, last name who was Jensen, no relation, but he brought a claim against the, against a public entity, and it was denied under sovereign immunity. And what had happened at that point is that a couple of attorneys took a look at that and said, well, hold on a second. Oregon's constitution guarantees a person a remedy, guarantees a person a remedy. And so this sovereign immunity concept doesn't fly with the concept of everybody gets a remedy. And so legislation had to take a look at it, and they decided, oh, boy, yeah, you're right. This sovereign immunity concept is not constitutional under the Oregon Constitution. So the Oregon legislature at that point, they put together the Oregon Tort Claims Act as a means to allow a person to bring a claim against a public entity. Now, knowing that public entities weren't as well-funded as just regular business and knowing that they didn't have an opportunity to gather insurance policies and things of that nature from big box insurance companies, things of that nature, they said, okay, you can bring a claim against a public entity, but it had, we have to have some guardrails put in place. And so originally, they decided that the, there would be some caps, some caps on damages, which would be the most amount that a person could absolutely expect to recover in the event a tort had been, they'd suffered damages from a tort act. And so originally, that cap on damages was $100,000. And if you had $100,000 in injuries, in medical bills, things of that nature, then you actually might be able to have a chance at another $100,000. So a grand total of $200,000 for injuries and then a total of $50,000 for property damage. So we could literally run a dump truck through a house and say, here's $50,000, that's all you can get. And that stood for the next some 40-odd years until about 2007. In 2007, at Oregon Health Sciences University, there was a young gentleman named Jordan Clark, and he had a lot of congenital troubles, and he went to OHSU for a surgery. And during the surgery, something went wrong. There were some medical complications, and it was determined that the doctor was responsible for those additional medical complications that he was, that he had sustained. And it was determined from doctors that his future medical care was going to be $17 million. And at that time, the Oregon Tort Claims Act had that cap of $200,000. And attorneys for the Oregon Health Sciences University said, here's your $200,000, hit the road. Well, those attorneys, they said, no, that's not a fair remedy when this young man is going to need $17 million in order for the healthcare that he's going to need to receive for the rest of his life. And so they challenged it. And again, the Oregon Tort Claims Act and its caps were determined to be unconstitutional. So at that point, legislation had to come in, fix that again. Immediately, the cap on damages went up to $500,000. And then every year, that amount since 2007 has been going up by 3% with a CPI market index rate that they apply to it. And so right now, the cap on damages for any one person, it's about $855,000. Now, that is the cap on damages that can be expected in state court through a civil action. We provide coverage for that, and we provide not only coverage for that, but we provide coverage for federal civil rights violations as well. And those wind up in federal court. And you know what the cap on damages are in federal court? Sky is the limit. The sky is the limit. There is no amount to the amount of damages that can be awarded in federal court. So do we try to keep things out of federal court? Absolutely, we do. Do we practice there? Absolutely, we do. And but that is just a whole different ballgame, and that is going to be a lot more involvement than a lot of the civil court actions are going to come up with. So when we look at liability, when we're looking at a tort that's been committed, we're looking at four different things, four different tests, in other words, to, to determine if there actually is some liability that the college might have. First of all, there's a duty owed. Now, I'll use a very simple example of a, an automobile accident. A duty owed, everybody owes everybody the duty to stop at a stop sign. And so if you blow through a stop sign, well, that you breach that duty. Now, after that breach of that duty, then there has to be a, an injury or damages as a result. So you blow through the stop sign, and 10 minutes later, a person comes and stops and they run into that stop sign. Well, no, there's no causation, there's no relevance there to that. So it has to be a direct result in damages directly from that, and those damages have to result, as a result of that breach of that duty. So we're looking for those four things to come together before we actually would determine if the college is liable. Now, can we actually determine if the college is liable? No, but we can make a good educated guess on your behalf. The only people that can actually truly determine liability is a judge and a jury. So, but we try to keep things away from the court system just because it is a more economical resolution to try to resolve matters as opposed to let them go through the legal system. Can you advance, please? Any questions about all that? I'm shotgunning all this information off to you. The, so we have a couple of, go, go ahead.
Yeah, my apologies. I just make sure there was no other questions before raising my hand. But there is like certain things that you could do to calculate risk though, right? You know, so you could do that ahead of time before going before a legal liability, judge and jury and so forth. What's, how's that determined? Like, is it like, is there a calculation and then it creates a percentage of risk? Or is there like a 1 through 10 type of risk factor? What, how's that work exactly?
Well, it, I wish I could say there was a science to it, but there's a lot of artistry there. First of all, in Oregon, Oregon has a liability statute which is known as 50% contributory liability. So you have to be 51% liable or responsible before you actually would incur legal liability. That would be the standard that would be put to a jury or to a judge who would make that determination of whether or not the college was that 51% liable. If you're 49% liable, nope, you don't take care of the other person's damages. In other states like Washington and California, they have what's known as a pure liability statute, and everybody takes care of their own damages. So even if you aren't the majority responsible, you can still be held or your damages can be reduced by your own contributory negligence.
Gotcha.
If we find out, or if we come to that determination that the college is more than that 51% liable, we're going to look to take care of all of the damages of the other party.
Gotcha. So 51% is essentially 100%, but in those other states, if you're like 33% liable, you're only responsible financially at least for 33% of the, of the tort.
Exactly, exactly right. Now, when we look at those things, we're still taking into consideration that liability on that other party. And while we don't necessarily count it anywhere, we definitely keep track of it because a person's own contributory negligence is going to reduce the actual value of their claim. But it just won't necessarily bar them from that recovery. They're still going to be able to get anything. But if a person does contribute to their own negligence, we're going to take a lot of that into account.
Gotcha.
Let's say we have a situation here at the, at the college where there is maybe a little bit of a defect in a sidewalk. And a person is walking along and they trip over that, that little bit of a defect in the sidewalk. They've been over the same sidewalk 20 or 30 different times. It's at nighttime, but there are plenty of lights showering down light upon the whole situation. They just simply weren't watching where they were going. Well, we're going to take that into account as we evaluate their claim. It's not everything that they asked for. We're going to take into account that that defect was, was obvious, and we're going to take into account that they've seen that before and they've been by that before. So it's not just going to be a, well, whatever you want, that's what we'll pay you. That's, that's just simply not going to happen. We take a lot of that into account, a person's own contributory negligence.
Understood. And just really briefly, follow-up question to that. There's actions that an institution can take prior to, to reduce that 51%. So like, so for instance, like the institution put in those lights, you know, the institution has a a plan for repairs and is setting aside budgetary stuff for those repairs and so forth. That, those are things that can help reduce that 51% liability, right?
Definitely. And one of the concepts that you just brought up there is known as discretionary immunity.
Gotcha.
So if you look around and your safety committee says, hey, we've got some broken sidewalk over next to building three, and as a board, you may look at that and you say, oh, boy, we don't really have the funding right now to fix that, that defect in the sidewalk. But we're going to put together a plan. We're going to save a little bit of money each year, and then in five years, all of our sidewalks are going to be replaced. As long as you're following that plan, that's actually something I can use in the defense of a claim to show that the board knew that they had a situation going on, but they just didn't have quite the funding or, or. Now, that's, of course, you'd have funding to fix a square of sidewalk, but that's just a very simplistic explanation of how discretionary immunity could be something that we would definitely employ as an affirmative defense in the event litigation took place. Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you. We don't, there are other immunities that are afforded to public entities, discretionary immunity being one of them. There's also, we also have recreational immunity, which was under a little bit of fire in recent years, but now it's been restored basically to as about a full prominence as it can be. And basically, the recreational immunity statute and provision gives a public entity immunity from injuries or damage that happen while a person, if you open up your land to recreation, it provides you with that immunity from injuries that take place during, you know, while a person is recreating on your land that you've opened up to the public. Do we stand on that immunity? No. If it's a situation where a person has tripped over a gopher hole in a field while they were throwing a frisbee for their dog, am I going to just tell them to hit the road? No, because I like that recreational immunity, and for a small injury or something of that nature, to help a person out with maybe a visit, a copay to a doctor's office or a visit to the doctor, yeah, we're going to try to help resolve that kind of a thing. I want to preserve that recreational immunity for when something big happens. There may be a time when I have to stand on that immunity, but for a simple, small accident, to take care of a person's copay to a doctor, is that the smart resolution? Yeah, it is, because it avoids the cost of litigation. And in a situation like that, a person versus a big entity like a district or a college, I don't want to be in that situation where I'm trying to say that, nope, the college just simply doesn't have any money or coverage to help out a poor person who's been injured on the premises. So are we going to help out? More than likely, yes. But again, it's going to be working with that person who's sustained that injury. If they want millions and millions of dollars, they'll get their day in court. We don't have any problem defending matters. But more often than not, we can convince people and help them understand that while we want to help you out, it's not going to be the sun, the moon, and the stars. Go ahead and advance. So some easy torts, some of the things that we absolutely defend and indemnify our members for. Premises, liability, as we've spoken with a little bit in the past, unsafe conditions, hazards that are, that may pop up. And one of the easiest ways that you can avoid those kinds of exposures, having a safety committee, walking around, taking a look, taking a look at different times throughout the year, making sure all the lights are in working order, making sure that there aren't defects in those, you know, in the sidewalks and in the premises, things that can be tripped over. Just little things like that can help offset, and anything that you do to, to offset those losses is just going to be helpful. It's something that we're going to point out. And a lot of times, a lot of people will say, well, okay, somebody trips and falls over a curb. Maybe it had a little bit of a defect to it. At that point, you're on notice. And a lot of times, liability will not accrue until you actually have notice of a hazard. And just because somebody has an injury or sustains an injury on your premises, doesn't necessarily mean that there's a hazard. We've had dozens of times when a person trips over a curb and they say, that curb was dangerous. And I get pictures of the curb, and I was noting as I walked in here, you have a nice premises here. It's in nice shape. It's in really good condition. And so we're going to investigate that situation. We're going to take a look, find out where that person fell. And if the sidewalk looks like the one that I walked in as I walked up here today, I'm probably going to look to deny that claim if a person says they tripped over a curb because the curb has to be there. We have to stop the cars from running people over on the sidewalks. And we've had situations, my goodness, where a curb was painted yellow. The person said, well, I didn't see the curb. It should have been painted blue. Well, if you didn't see it when it was yellow, you weren't going to see it when it was blue either. So those are the kind of things. But even in those types of situation, if a person is just looking for a copay or a visit to a doctor, we're probably going to help them out just because it's not a thing to press on. And I'll talk a little bit later about the different types of litigation that we're seeing. But that litigation is costly, and I have to, one of the tests that I'm looking for when we determine whether or not we are going to make a resolution or to deny a claim, one of the tests that we're looking at is what would the cost of litigation be? Because I have to hire an attorney, and I have to pay possibly for experts to determine if the injury is related to the accident that took place. And so we take all of that into account, cost of defense. It's a real cost. And there are times when we may have to make a resolution that we don't want to just because the exposure is a lot greater than actually just taking care of it. And again, when it comes back to the trust, I'm looking for the most economic resolution. And again, when it comes back to the trust, I'm looking for the most economic resolution to try to help out. Now, when we make these kinds of determinations, we're looking to admin here at the college to be in concert to know that, why we're making these kinds of determinations that we are. Because it's, it's simply not an easy task when you don't really have a lot of claims that take place. It's a little bit difficult to help people understand why sometimes resolution is the smarter choice as opposed to, to denying every single thing and going to litigation on every single thing. If that happened, this trust would go bankrupt. I just simply can't fight all of them as much as I'd like to. And so discretion, the better part of valor. And we do make resolutions where we may not have that liability, but it may be the smart resolution or the smart thing to do. Let's see. So other things, traffic violations, running the stop sign, failure to yield. Those are different types of civic duties that everybody owes everybody. And so those are easy. We have defense for those. We're going to defend you in those types of situations. We're going to try to make those resolved so they don't get into litigation. One of the other things that we're looking at too as well is that there always can be some kind of media exposure for anything that takes place. And we're going to look and see also as well, is there some kind of reason why the college may not want a lawsuit getting into the courts because of the media exposure? That's intangible. It doesn't show up on any ledger anywhere. But goodness, if you're going, if you're up for a bond or something of that nature and all of a sudden there is litigation left and right, that can alter the people's concept of what is really a good college. And it may make them less willing to maybe vote for a bond or, or maybe vote for a levy or, or something of that nature. So we take a look at the things that are intangible as well too, just because we, we live here too. So that's, we're always taking those kinds of things into consideration. Go ahead and advance. So now the, the naughty torts, the intentional torts. This is the situation where I may not have coverage. And of course, assault and battery. It's just never going to be in the course and scope of your duties to hit somebody as much as they may deserve it. So please stay away from assault. Don't hit people and don't, don't yell and scream at them. Intentional infliction of emotional distress, that is a common allegation that is made. And that can be made from not only employees, but also from people who, who come on, patrons and students who come onto the premises as well. That's where you intentionally are trying to be mean to somebody and, and cause them mental anguish over something. And then of course, the two obvious ones of intentional torts, the defamation based torts. Liable for something you've written, slander for something you've said, be kind. That's just the, the most easy way to avoid getting those kinds of suits brought against you. Go ahead and advance. So some of the trends that we're currently seeing, some of the things that we're currently seeing, we are seeing increased frequency in litigation. There are a lot of hungry attorneys out there and they are more than willing to bring claims against public entities. And they, they do it more frequently than ever. We had five trials last year and my 21 years, if we had one trial, that was, that was really a busy year. And so we had five last year that actually went to the jury. And there are just a lot more people who are a lot more emboldened with bringing that litigation. And there are times when the litigation happens right out of the gate and we don't even really get the chance to speak with the person, investigate. The first time we hear about it is through that lawsuit. And so we're off to the races right out of the gate. But that frequency is increasing. It was decreased for a while during the pandemic time because the courts were closed. And there was a little bit of a backlog after, the courts opened back up after the pandemic. And so a lot of cases went through real quickly. But now the courts are back really, they are back in session and they are at full capacity. But there just are a lot of cases that are being filed and a lot of suits that are being filed against public entities right now. We're also seeing, and this is one of the reasons we take a look also at early resolution versus going through that litigated process, is that right now, if a person files suit either in state or in federal court, there's going to be about a two-year wait while we go through all of the steps of discovery and go through all of the litigation process before they'll even make it to a, to a, to a trial, to a jury. And so that is a lot of time. And here's the unfortunate truth. People at public entities, they will retire, they will quit. And sometimes they may even pass away. And in that two-year timeframe, I need all of those witnesses. I need all of those employees' testimony. And if a person quits or is fired, then is that person going to be friendly to me when I want to get some information out of them? Maybe not. And so there is that time value in there that my whole situation can change. A person moves away to Europe and now I've lost them as a, as a witness and they don't have their testimony. That can really change the outcome and that can change my evaluation of a case. When all of a sudden the person I thought was going to be the star witness is no longer available. So those are the kind of things also that we have to take into account as we evaluate whether or not it's a good idea to resolve a matter or to let it go all the way through to trial. So go ahead and advance there. So increased frequency in litigation, the reason, one of the reasons we're seeing is it is lucrative as well. If we were to have a case that was brought in federal court, a lot of times an attorney is going to bring an allegation of a violation of civil rights. And with that, with that allegation of a violation of some form of civil right, there's what's known as attorney, an attorney fee petition associated with that allegation. Now, what that means is if the attorney makes a collection, if they get a verdict on that allegation, they get the attorney fees associated to that allegation. And what I'd mentioned before with cases taking from the time of filing till the time of trial being about two years, that attorney has been cranking that machine for two years. And it can cost us anywhere in the neighborhood of maybe a hundred to $150,000 to defend a matter up to litigation, especially in civil, in federal court. And the attorney fee petition may actually be double of that. And in one of the cases that we did lose a while ago, that attorney fee petition was $350,000. Now, here's the thing, the jury does not get to know that that attorney is going to get their fees on top of what they award as a verdict at trial. So they may not even like the defendant or the plaintiff in that situation. And then they say, ah, let's give them a hundred bucks. That hundred dollar is a verdict and that attorney can get their fees on top of that. Now, what, how that changes the landscape is that sometimes in a situation where we have that federal court litigation going on, sometimes the attorney may not necessarily be representing that person anymore. They may be trying to get a fee out of the whole thing, knowing full well that if they can just get some small verdict, they're going to get their fees out of the deal. And so that kind of changes the landscape for us. It's one of the things that I really have to take into consideration when, when we're evaluating a case is how much is that fee petition going to be? And especially when it comes to most of the civil, some, most of the litigation in federal court is going to be employment practices related. And in that, in that type of situation, here again, we're sitting up at a situation where as the defendant, we would be the college and the person who's the plaintiff, that person who's been wrongfully, or alleges they were wrongfully terminated, they're an employee. And who are the people going to be on that jury? Are they going to be bosses? Are they going to be presidents of, of, of industry? They're going to be workers. And so there's already a built-in bias against the employer in that situation because more likely than not, it's going to look like the, the person on the jury is going to be able to associate with that person who feels they've been wrongfully terminated. So we've had tons of employment cases go to trial and we've been fairly successful on those. But that is a situation where if I can have the chance to try to resolve the matter before it gets to that jury, I'm going to probably try to take the chance to do it. Even though it looks like there may be no liability and this person was just simply an employee who needed to find excellence elsewhere. That bias is built in and it has been proven time and time again. We've also, and not only has there been an increase in frequency of litigation, there's an increase in the severity, in the prayers that are being made in those, in those cases that are, that are filed. And before, before I came to PACE and special districts, I worked for a company that handled litigation for a, a large pharmacy. And the cases, I handled a lot of cases in New York. And every single time when that litigation was filed, the prayer, what they were cresting for is damages from the jury, 10 million, 20 million dollars. It was always that way. There was a reason for it because in New York, if an attorney makes a prayer for damages and the jury actually gives them more than what the prayer was, the attorney can actually face a malpractice for not asking for enough money. So all of these prayers were always, it was always 20 million bucks, always 20 million bucks. Anymore in state court and federal court, most of the time in the state court cases that we're seeing, when they are filed, especially anywhere in the valley, they're being filed for the tort cap, 900 or a million dollars is, is the typical prayer. All of them are for that million dollar prayer because it just seems like a million dollars isn't anything anymore. And so one of the other biases that we face is that as a jury going into that trial and you're looking, wow, this person is asking for a million dollars, it must be something valuable. It must, something really bad must have happened if they're asking for this much money. And so there, again, there's a bias right out of the gate in what the attorneys are actually asking for in that the person who's on that jury may think, well, they asked for a million. It must be worth a million. One of the other big differences too, and especially in federal court where again, there are no caps available to us, a lot of times the prayers in those kinds of federal court litigation, the prayers are going to be 5 million or 10 million or something of that nature. And so now the federal courthouse here in Eugene, oh, it's pretty. It is beautiful. We call it the art museum just because it is so pretty from the outside. Parking is horrible. I hate having to come here. But think of yourself going into that big building and with all of the grandeur associated to it and it is so nicely and so well-appointed. You get the feeling of, oh my goodness, if the case was brought in this courtroom, it must be important. And so there's another bias that we find that going right into it. So those are just some of the reasons we try to look to see if we can possibly resolve things before we get to that kind of a, that kind of a situation. So people asking for a million dollars in a prayer before damages, that's just commonplace anymore. And even 10 years ago, that just wasn't the case. But now with the tort cap at 855,000, it's just not all that much to ask for a million bucks. So that's, that's one of the things that we see. So also we are seeing some novel theories of liability, new theories of liability, things that we haven't seen before. One of your, we had a case that was lost for one of your co-community colleges down on the coast. And in that lawsuit, they brought the college's handbook as a contract claim. They said that the handbook basically constituted a contract between the college and the student. And they brought a breach of contract claim. And the jury awarded on that, that theory. And so we're seeing these new theories of liability come across. Here's the hardest thing, I don't have coverage for breach of, breach of contract. Nobody has coverage for breach of, breach of contract. Because if there was coverage for breach of contract, everybody would just, you know, not, not adhere to the contract. So that's one of the things unfortunately that I won't have coverage for. And so that new novel theory of liability is, is just one that we're seeing. And we're seeing different things too, just different ways to try to extract money from public entities. And it's just becoming more creative and more creative. Have any of you ever actually been a defendant in a lawsuit? Oh, good. I'm so glad I'm not seeing hands. I have. I'm currently one. So go ahead and, or the, oh, if you could go back just for one second, sorry. We've also seen increases in employees and even board members named in those complaints. And sometimes the reason for it is that they are just trying to be personal. They're, they're trying to make it hurtful. If you do find yourself as, and I'm glad you haven't, but if you do find yourself as a name defendant in the lawsuit, one of the worst things that you will ever experience is if you ever have to go and try to get some financing for something. You're at the car dealership and you want to finance money for a car. And in the application for finance, there's going to be one little checkbox that says, are you a defendant in a lawsuit? And when you check that, the alarms will go off because they did for me. The, and if there are things I can do to try to help out with that, I can let them know that, that you as board members are covered not only on the Oregon Tort Claims Act, but you're also covered under, under that coverage agreement that you have with PACE. I can write a letter to that effect. Is it going to turn the tide? Is it going to convince the bank that you are worthy of gathering that credit? I don't know. So I will try my best to help out, but there is a chance that even my letter to a bank or creditor on your behalf is not going to change the fact that, that you're named as a defendant. The, so that, that's just one thing we try. The other reason why we see a lot more employees and we see a lot more people at public entities named is there is also along in that Clark v OHSU case that I spoke about before, there has to be a, an employee named as a defendant in order to try to get past those caps. And there is a way to get past a cap with the way the, the complaint is alleged, even in state court. So there's a way to do it if the damages are sufficient, that it would actually be that that, even that tort cap at 855,000 is an insufficient remedy. There's a way around it. They have to name an employee or somebody associated to that, that public entity though, as the first starting point of, of getting around those tort caps. But those are really only on very rare occasions where the damages are really exceptional. Normal, everyday, soft tissue injuries, those are not going to, those are not going to break that, that, that cap. So again, they could go ahead and answer. So we are seeing more board members, we are seeing more board members named as defendants. And just for a couple of reasons, just for spite. And it's also can be a means to increase the cost of defense. It is an actual tactic that they are actually using because they may make an allegation where you as a board member or an employee might have a disparate interest from the actual defense of the college. They may single, single you out for something you said or something you did that may not be necessarily aligned with the college. And in situations like that, where those allegations are made against individual members for something maybe not aligned with, with the rest of the defense of the matter, I have to hire another attorney to defend you. And it's, it's not that, that we want to, it's that we have to. And so that's going to increase the cost of defense because now I've got two attorneys working on a matter. So that's just another one of the reasons, one of the tactics that, that attorneys are using to try to help make me understand that the exposure might be greater than, than what I really think it is or what it may be at face value. Go ahead and advance. So anybody can sue anybody for anything. As mentioned, I'm named in a Douglas County complaint right now for my handling of a claim. That's always fun, but luckily I've got a good company behind me to help take care of that. Just because they name you, of course, doesn't mean it's valid. It's a scare tactic. It's truly designed to make that employee go to their employer and say, hey, who's going to take care of me for this? Do I need to find my own counsel? Things of that nature. So it's designed to confuse, it's designed, it's designed to scare somebody. Now, with that Clark v OHSU ruling, there was a time when I could get employees who were named in litigation, I could get them dismissed from the matter because of that Oregon tort cap protection that the entity, the public entity must defend and indemnify those employees, those agents on behalf. And so there was really no reason to go after a person because the, at the end of the day, that public entity was the actual, going to be the remedy in that situation. Now, with that determination, with that Clark v OHSU case that came through, more often than not, I'm not able to. And so you'll be along for the ride. And if that ever happens, we're definitely going to put out letters so you know exactly where you stand with regards to the coverage. You'll never go with it alone unless you've done just something completely awful, which I hope never happens because I still, I want to keep you in that umbrella. So when it comes to getting people dismissed, most likely not, unfortunately. Go ahead and advance. And attorneys, they are looking for any reason that they can to name a board member or an employee based on their actions. And what are they looking for? They're looking for evidence that that employee discriminated against, was discriminated against by somebody at the college for one of the protected classes, gender, age. In Oregon, the age of where a person can be discriminated against based on their age is 18. In federal court, it's 40. So at 18, most, I'm sure most all of your employees here are over 18 or at least 18 or older. So they're automatically in one protected class right out of the gate, just, just with their age, with their gender, with their national origin, all of the different protected classes that are out there. Most everybody is a member of at least two or three. And the attorneys are going to try everything they can to find any reason why that this person might have been discriminated against for one of those protected classes. They're looking for evidence of some kind of retaliation for an employee acting in some kind of protected activity. One of the biggest ones we see is retaliation for whistleblowing. An employee coming along and saying that the college was misspending funds or doing something illegally or not providing a service that they were supposed to. And then also some kind of activity too, that shows that there was a hostile work environment. So those are some of the key ways that they're looking. Those most often are going Those most often are going to be known as questions of fact, and which means that will be up to a jury to decide. When we get litigation, we take a look at all of the allegations, and attorneys are going to throw every single allegation that they can at us to try to see what things might stick. And we're going to look to dismiss, have as many of those allegations dismissed as possible, because there may be no evidence for them. And that's just because they make the allegation, they still have to back it up with the facts, they still have to back it up with the evidence. So, we're going to try to get as many of those dismissed. But things like retaliation, really hard to get those dismissed. Things like discrimination, those are going to be left to a jury to decide. And so when we know that there are allegations that are not going to be able to be dismissed, those are going to be determined by, by a jury, or by a judge depending. That's the time that we need to take a look at what that exposure then is at that point, because we know we are not going to be getting out of it. We know this has the potential then, and the exposure to actually get to a jury who can decide what the verdict might be. And I'm a little bit of a control freak. I would just as soon try to get that resolved, as opposed to letting nine or 12 people determine our fate. So, that's another, one of the reasons what, that we're taking that into account. So, if you could advance. So, in the event that you get sued, what can be done to help avoid litigation for board members? Keeping your involvement in the day-to-day operations of your, of your district or your college at a minimum. You've got people that you've hired to handle those kinds of things. Let them do that. Avoiding assumption of supervision of staff. This one is a hard one, but I've seen it at a lot of our other districts, especially when the board starts just directly managing folks. Generally, you've got one employee, it's your president here. And one of the other things that we see too, is that we're in a lot better shape when we can maintain that concept of chain of command. Everything coming up through the president to you, and everything coming back from you down through the president to the employees. When those, when those types of establishments break down, when we do see that direct contact, that just opens up a lot more of chances for miscommunication, and it opens up a lot more opportunities for those employees to make certain allegations, because there might not be the, there, there might just not be the evidence, or there might not be the, the different kinds of, of things that we would see in the more traditional, keeping that chain of command, keeping that flow of information going in that, in those types of directions. And when it comes down to defending a lawsuit, documentation is key. If I've got the documentation, I'm a whole lot better off. And if I don't have that documentation, then we have to look and see what type of exposure we may have. So, go ahead and advance. What to do in the event that you do, are summoned to a complaint? Alert your administration, get a copy of that complaint to us as soon as possible. Don't destroy any documents. And by documents, I mean anything at all. Getting rid of emails. Also, I don't know if you guys use your phones for business at the college? Does anybody use their cellphone? Yeah? Okay. Yeah. Official business on your cellphone may be discoverable, most likely it is. And so, your cellphone could be subject to discovery. And so just keep that in mind. And then, yeah, so don't destroy any emails, any texts, anything of that nature, just because that is all discoverable, and smarter people than me will find out if it was destroyed or deleted. So, don't do that, because I don't want to have to recreate those items, or help recreate them. Steve?
Quick question, it's kind of to the slide you were on just a moment ago. We, you may know, I don't know, but for this kind of philosophical issue that the board is wrestling with, right? Some feel that we should be operating at a very high policy level only, and then, you know, president takes those policies and operationalizes them, we stay out of that. Others feel that we need to have more direct involvement, you know, voting on operational, and getting involved in various ways, including voting on operational matters, right? So, not commenting on whether, on that, where I stand on that, but just trying to understand from your perspective, I think that's largely why we had you, or have you here tonight, just to help us understand, are there liabilities, risks? Does it increase our risk if we are to take, if we are to become a more operationally-oriented board?
I'll go back to the second slide, it depends. And no, the, you know, I can't, I, I never, and I'm not an attorney, so don't take this as any kind of legal advice. Everything that you do has a, a bit of risk associated to it. There's risk with every single action. The more hands-on, on the day-to-day operation, that's when the more potential, potential for exposure exists. I won't say that it will, or that it won't, but it just increases the potential of exposure. It, it can. It all depends on, on what the nature of, of any of the activity is. So, it doesn't guarantee it, but it potentially could.
Again, no, you're not an attorney and cannot provide legal advice, yada, yada. But governance falls under while acting in the course and scope of their duties.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And, and that's, as long as it's not an illegal activity.
Of course.
I'm going to try to keep you guys under the wing. You guys, you're here to educate the kids. And, and so we want to be supportive of that. How you do it is how you do it. And I can't, I wouldn't direct one way or the other, but just from what I've seen from my experience, the more hands-on may increase the, the, the personal exposure to that. Now, you're acting in the course and scope of your duties, great, I've got you covered for it, but it may increase the amount of headache that, that you have, just in the litigation as it goes forward.
And a good area where to understand the scope and role of your responsibilities, and I'm meaning board members, is under board policies, under things like role of the chair, role of the, role of the board, and so forth. That would fall under while acting in the scope of.
When you, it's really great when you're following policies.
Of course.
And, and if you're, if you're outside the, the policy, outside the parameters of the policy, that's an exposure that I'm going to look at and say, I need to take care of something here. Time for me to get out the checkbook and, and make a resolution. Just because if, if I know something is going to be guaranteed that a person is going to achieve a verdict for, I'm looking, and I actually, in all honesty, I've got a financial obligation to you as a college. If you have litigation against you, I've really got a fiduciary responsibility to try to get you out of that, as best that I can. And that's that fine line of artistry between an economic resolution versus something going to a jury. But more often than not, that economic resolution is going to far be better than what we find at jury. It just, things just don't get better at trial, is the simple thing. So, yes, following policy, yes, staying in the course and scope of duties. I'm going to be a lot better off in, in defending that matter, but it's just, it's going to come into question by somebody somewhere down the road. And so it, it, yeah, hard, hard to say whether it actually will, but it definitely could increase the amount of headache, because then you have to talk with the attorneys that I hire, and it takes time out of your day and, and all of that good stuff. It takes you away from the actual doing what you want to be here to do, which is, is providing that education.
Absolutely. Not, non-related question, but in regards to, you mentioned there was additional court cases, lawsuits, and so forth. And because we're kind of like in a group policy with PACE and stuff like that, is that increase also, and this is more of like a budgetary thing for my head, is this increasing the costing of that because of those increased number of litigation and stuff like that to the, to the entire group as a whole?
Yeah, most definitely. The, and really, one of the biggest costs of the coverage that we provide is actually for the reinsurance portion of it.
Understood, okay.
And especially for property, when it comes to property, everybody has seen superstorm Sandy and things of that nature, earthquakes and tornadoes and all of that stuff. When it comes to reinsurance, we're part of a global market. And so everything that happens in the world, when a tsunami hits, when an earthquake hits, when great big fires happen, those all change the values and change the cost of the reinsurance. And so everybody subsidizes those, those payments to those other places, and in the hopes that there'll be some money left in the tank if we have a natural disaster here. But that cost for, especially for the property, that's one of the big reasons it goes up. One of the bigger reasons that the liability coverage goes up, the reinsurance for that liability coverage, when you have things like Sandusky, when you have things like, you know, big sexual abuse and molestation cases. And that's one of the things that I always talk about. Two of the biggest exposures, it's great to have a very nice premises here for, for your patrons and for your invitees, it's great to have that. I can handle trip and falls all day long. The things that move the needle for me are employment cases and sex abuse and molestation. And those are the things that we really focus a lot on, it, just because those are the cases that make the news, and those are the cases with the big resolutions. Those are the cases that, that really get people angry, and they really start to get those verdict dollars flowing. And there's a lot of them happening all over the place, and reinsurance is, is going up just because of a lot of those things. We have them here too. I handle a lot of them. It's simply just a horrible thing to have to go through and take care of, but that's one of the biggest reasons of all, of where those, where those contribution dollars for your coverage go to, and, and why those costs go up.
Jerry?
Yeah, on that, the costs, how much do you usually pay out in a year?
Oh, goodness.
Kind of just a ballpark, maybe?
You, you got me on that one. I.
Lots.
It's, it's a lot, yeah. I'll have to leave it at that. I don't, I don't honestly know how much we pay out each year. But I do know the cost of every single claim, because I watched that, and the cost of claims on average is also increasing. And it just, it's also due to the higher cost of healthcare. The cost of going to the doctor just costs a lot more than it used to. And so all of those things together are just driving an increase in the general overall average cost of a claim.
Jill?
So, I'm familiar with the policies and stuff, having been an executive director of an organization that had to go through all this too, and being self-funded as well in the nonprofit world. On the risk assessment of Lang Community College, and as you go through the renewal process of the insurance, and so you're going down the list and you're looking at the risk assessments, one of the issues that you look at specifically with relationship to the board, that's what I'm interested in the moment, I can think of all the other things related to a college, that you would want to make sure we're meeting, so that our risk doesn't go up, causing our prices to go up, or even sell us, you know, start moving us away from being able to be insured.
And that is more for our underwriters. I don't know that they necessarily get down to that granular level of assessment, but really, and unfortunately, this is kind of a reactionary thing, if a claim were to occur, I'm going to report to our underwriters my feelings on, on what took place there. Will that result in them taking a closer look at the operations? Definitely. And especially if the claim trending starts to go up, we're having a few different claims, they're, they're going to take a look at that. And they'll, they'll probably take a little bit deeper dive into, into the operation to see what's going on.
Okay. Because that would, I would assume that would affect the DNO insurance case, or the amounts, or all the different limits. How expensive is our insurance?
That part I don't honestly know.
Well, now, you just don't have numbers.
I, you know, I am a checkbook. I don't bring the money in. We, we kind of joke about this at the office, our underwriters bring it in, and I try to spend as little of it as possible. But I, honestly, you, you got me on that one. I don't honestly know.
I'm sure that I could probably ask our wonderful president over here at some point, it's not a big deal. But I, I know that this kind of insurance can be costly, and I'm glad we're self-insured because it's cheaper.
If there is any, if this provides any kind of solace or comfort, I wish I could be insured where we're at. Because I know the cost of coverage that we provide is way less than I can get it for my little house. And so I, I truly wish, I, myself, I'd probably find out how I could be a special, a special district, so I can have my house covered.
Yeah. For informational purposes, we were talking about this earlier, the reason why we have PACE is through the Oregon School Board Association. So, it's essentially a group rate coverage. Would you like to maybe describe the dynamics of that, just for the information of the board members?
Yeah, yeah. Oregon School Boards Association is the somewhat overall umbrella parent company of PACE. They are the sponsor of PACE. And it all came really about, Oregon School Boards Association actually had a trust before PACE, it was known as PACT, and it did not fare well. And when we were, this is 20, oh, I'm old, this is 20, oh, 22 years ago, yeah, 20, 22 years ago, the PACT was struggling financially, and we were only handling at, at special districts, we were only handling the public entities in Oregon. And there was an insurer called Great American, they had about 90 some odd school districts, and they, at one point, gave what's known as a 90-day letter and said, we're pulling up stakes, we're not doing public entities anymore. And we have agents, we have dedicated agents, they're all independent agents, you have Brown and Brown. So, you might have had Jeff Sinclair maybe come here and, and speak with you at one point. And our group of agents, knowing that we were handling public entities, they came over to us and said, hey, we've got all these clients, do you, would you, and their insurer just picked up and hit the road, would you want to help out these school, these different school entities? And we said, okay, not knowing what we were getting into. And so we did, we started with 90 some odd districts, and then, at that point, also PACT was struggling financially. And so that was kind of a melding of those two groups, and that's what, that's what really PACE was born from. And so now we have all of the K-12 schools in Oregon, except for Portland, Beaverton, and Salem. We have all the community colleges. We have all of the ESDs, Education Service Districts, and we have a good number of charter schools as well, too. And we have something like 305 educational entities altogether. So, if something happens in Oregon at a educational facility, and it's not Portland, Beaverton, or Salem, one of my team is behind it, trying to get it taken care of and helped out. I hope that somewhat answers the question.
Yeah. And so essentially, the calculation of risk is a group rate, essentially of all the school districts in the state. And then as far as the cost, fun factoid, OCCA, Oregon Community College Association, actually pays our rate into Oregon School Board Association. So, it's built into the cost of our membership of OCCA. So, fun factoid of the day. We have two minutes left on the subject matter, and I know you have a few more slides, I apologize.
No worries. This is, I am here to try to help answer as many questions as possible, and, and again, much appreciation for the opportunity. Go ahead and advance. I think I'm, I think I'm close to done.
Yeah, you're on the last two slides.
Okay, good. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, good. So, a couple of different aspects of coverage that we provide. One is the defense of a matter, paying for an attorney. And the other is indemnification, and that's paying for the damages that might be alleged against them. So, a couple of different types. Those intentional torts, though, for assault and battery and slander and libel, I may not be able to cover you on those. There may be a gap in coverage there where, where I'm not able to provide, I might only be able to provide the defense, but for a lot of the intentional torts, I may not be able to pay for the damages. If that ever happens, you'll get a letter a long time ahead of time of telling you exactly where the coverage is. But that's the time when I can actually determine what that coverage is going to be, is when we actually have that, either the, the tort claim is a little more squishy, but when I have that lawsuit, that's really when I can really hammer in and find out exactly what that coverage is. Because now I've got an allegation in writing, that I can actually apply to that coverage document, and let everybody know exactly where the coverage is. And more often than not, it's there. More often than not, we have the coverage so very few times, that I have to provide a letter that says, boy, I'm sorry, I don't have coverage for this particular allegation. One of the biggest ones of all, back pay. The amount of pay that a person would have in an employment practices lawsuit, that a person would have reasonably earned from the time they were terminated until the time to get to trial. That, that's known as back pay. I don't have coverage for that. And so that's one of the biggest ones that, that I won't be able to provide coverage for. Go ahead and advance. Other things that aren't covered, fines, penalties, the resolution of any kind of injunctive relief or declaratory action, and then punitive damages. Now, state court does not allow for punitive damages to be levied against a public employee, or an employee of a public, either a district or a college, or whatever the case is, public entity. Federal court, however, those punitive's can come in, and that's going to be one of the other cases where I'm going to send that letter, and I might not be able to assist with, with those kinds of damage, most likely won't.
10 seconds, sorry.
All right. I think I'm down to the last.
Yeah, you are, yeah.
There we go. Other, other things, one of the biggest things of all, any actions taken outside of a board meeting, avoid that at all costs. And then any of the posts that you may have on social media, don't do that, because you're a, you're a citizen at that point, unless the board has actually authorized you to, to make some kind of a statement. But avoid social media. Social media is evil, let's just say it. And no, no talking business on personal social media. And I think with that, I might be to the questions.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Thank you for answering all of our questions during the presentation.
Happy to do it.
Yeah, excellent. Oh. Oh, one last question, then we have to move on to the next topic.
You mentioned the that there's the opportunity to ask you questions in the future if there's any concerns or things. How would we route you that question? Would that go through the board chair, the president, or both?
Yeah, filter it through the, any one of those, any one of those folks. Nicole has my email address, jjensen, J J E N S E N at sdao.com. Or you can send it even easier, which will also come to me, claims@sdao.com.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'd really like to have that come through my office, Jen.
Best, best, when when it comes, when I'm talking about chain of command and that kind of thing, best if it does go through the president's office. That's perfect.
Heard and understood.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Grace. We appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to go over the bias discrimination harassment training.
Oh, it's going to get a lot better now.
Austin, I think we got a 90 minute training coming up. Would it be possible to do a five minute break before it starts?
Five minute bio break is perfectly acceptable here, yeah. We'll go ahead and return at 7:17. Once again, we'll be going through our biased discrimination harassment training. President Bulger.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Samantha Maldonado. And Samantha, I'll have you introduce yourself and get us started with this training. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Yes, Samantha Maldonado. I have my own coaching and people and culture strategy firm called Chaska Consulting that I've done for quite a few years, as well as having experience in the corporate arena in this very space to change leadership. It's in the HR and then culture and people spaces for Fortune 500. So this is an opportunity for me to continue to do the work that I'm passionate about, where I can see direct influence and exposure to this work, to really help bring everyone forward through an inclusive lens. So as we see all that's happening in the headlines as of late, ultimately, it's about people aligning to impact and how we can all make that a shared goal and a shared vision. So I'm happy to be here with you this evening. So thank you.
Awesome.
Perfect. So as we're here for this evening, as mentioned, we're here to create a culture of inclusion and compliance. So really being more thoughtful about our board roles, responsibilities and boundaries. And I will say some of my thunder was taken from a previous speaker, but it just sets me up even beautifully. So thank you. So we can go to the next slide. So we really are here to create a culture of inclusion and compliance. And so, again, I want to say thank you for having me here today. I know this training comes at a very important time for Lang Community College, and I appreciate your willingness to engage in this conversation and being receptive. Today, we're going to address some fundamental aspects of board governance, specifically your legal responsibilities, the boundaries between governance and management, so that was a key question from earlier, and what inclusive leadership really looks like in practice. So this is really about establishing clear standards going forward so that every board member understands what's expected and how to fulfill your fiduciary duties with excellence, with intention. And the work that you do matters tremendously to this institution and to the community overall that it serves. As mentioned, to the children that you are fostering and a safe, inclusive space for their education. So we have 90 minutes together and we'll cover four key areas that I'll cover in just a moment. But I encourage you to ask questions at the end, knowing that kind of got off base a little bit before. So I want to be mindful of our time together because there's a lot to cover. And most importantly, commit to the high standards that this role as being a board member really does require. So anything before we begin?
Any questions before we begin? All right.
Okay, we can advance, Nicole. Thank you. So the four key areas that we're focusing on today and how we're spending each time really is about legal foundation to the practical application. So we'll start with the law, what Title VII really requires and what happens when board members don't comply. Then we'll clarify the often blurry line between governance and management. What does that look like? What are the key roles? Next, we'll explore what it means to govern through an equity and inclusion lens. And finally, we'll discuss accountability and your commitments going forward. So we can get right into it because we were, we are good to go. So next slide, please. So why does this matter now, right? We are all seeing what's happening in the media. We are all seeing what's happening in our in our neighborhoods. We're seeing what's happening across the country. And we're here because there have been confirmed findings of discrimination and bias and harassment allegations. So there are ongoing concerns about appropriate conduct and boundaries. So we're here to discuss that. So this is not hypothetical. This is not rhetorical. This is real. It is serious and requires our full attention. So as board members, you're held to the highest standards legally and ethically. And when you meet those standards, you expose yourself personally, you expose this institution financially and reputationally, and you can undermine the very mission of who you are here to serve. So I'm here to ensure that every person in this room leaves with absolute clarity about what the law requires, what appropriate conduct looks like, and what will happen if those standards aren't met and sustained. The community college you serve educates thousands of students. And so they deserve a board that operates with integrity, professionalism and commitment for their success. So that's why we're here to ensure that we are all on the same page. Sound good? Perfect. Okay. So Title VII, what does this mean? That I did provide you, if I'm not sure if it's in your packet, but kind of a quick one pager, if you will, about what a quick reference guide to Title VII all entails. So it is a federal law. It applies to you. It applies to this institution. And there is no exception because you're a volunteer board member, myself included because I serve on a college board. The law is very clear. You cannot discriminate, harass or retaliate against anyone based on these protective characteristics, as was mentioned from the previous speaker. Let me emphasize something even more important. Title VII doesn't just apply to hiring and firing. It applies to how you interact with the president, how you treat staff, questions that you ask, the comments that you make and the environment that you create. It's all part of the play. In Oregon, even the law provides even broader protections than just the federal law, as we can see on the slide. And as a public institution, Lang Community College is held to rigorous standards, and so is everyone on this board. We agree to that? Yes? Okay, perfect. We can move on. So as mentioned in the previous session, you kind of set me up really well here. Can board members be held liable? And this is not theoretical. Board members can be and have been held personally liable for discrimination, harassment and retaliation. It is a real thing. No one is immune. But if we have the comment of, but I'm just a volunteer, that's not a defense. Or I didn't mean it that way, doesn't matter. Intent doesn't matter. It's the impact that matters, right? But I was just asking questions within my oversight role. There's a very clear line though between what's appropriate inquiry and harassment, and we'll get into that. And so when courts assess liability, they ask, would a reasonable person find this conduct offensive, hostile or abusive? They look at the totality of circumstances, the frequency, the severity, any patterns and the related impact on the recipient. And if you're found liable personally, you could face unlimited damages or for intentional discrimination. Your personal assets, your home, your savings are at risk. Insurance doesn't always cover intentional misconduct, as we just learned in the previous session. So beyond legal liability, there's reputational damage, and that's a lot harder to come back from in a way. Board censure and the impact on this institution's ability to serve students can also be impacted. And I'm not trying to scare you. I'm trying to be very clear and forthright and ensure that you understand the gravitas of the situation. Okay? Any questions on that? You feel good? Okay.
You are scaring me.
A little bit just for awareness, right? A little bit for awareness. So how do we define harassment? What crosses the line? So let's be specific about what it looks like so that you can recognize it for yourself and in others, right? Harassment isn't just sexual harassment, though that's of course included. It's any unwelcome conduct based on protected characteristics that creates a hostile environment, those protected characteristics that we already covered. Okay? Unwelcome, as an example, means the recipient did not invite it or consent to it. They like, not, that's not for me. No means no, right? Based on protected characteristics means the conduct relates to someone's race, gender, age, disability, religion and so forth. Hostile environment means the conduct is severe or pervasive enough that a reasonable person would find it intimidating, hostile or abusive. Okay? So here's what's important. You don't get to decide for yourself if something is harassment. It's based on the recipient's experience that matters. And the courts use an objective, reasonable person standard. So what does this mean? What is, what are some examples? So an example could be repeatedly questioning a female's competence when not doing the same for male staff, making comments about someone being too emotional or not tough enough that play into gender stereotypes, asking intrusive questions about family plans that you wouldn't ask everyone, and using aggressive or intimidating communication tactics that can create and sustain fear. So one severe incident can constitute harassment. You don't get multiple chances to use racial slurs or make sexually explicit comments. Doesn't work. Okay? Are there any questions about how we define harassment and what it looks like? Are we clear what those boundaries are? Yeah? Okay. So just to take a quick pause, I know this could be a lot of information thus far, but one thing I want us to ground in is anytime you learn something new, it follows this competency quadrant. So whenever I do any any trainings or educational engagements, I always reference this competency quadrant. So anytime you learn something new, every single person on this planet starts in the unconscious incompetence bucket. You just don't know what you don't know. But if you're learning how to code, or you're learning how to ride a bike, or you're learning any sort of skill set, everyone starts with the unconscious incompetence. There's a whole world that you haven't even tapped into yet. But when you start pulling on threads and start engaging and learning more about what that material is, then you become consciously incompetent. You now know that there is more to learn. You start to dig deeper, you start to ask the questions, right? But then it takes active and intentional application to become consciously competent. You now know what you know. You now know there is more to learn. And so now it becomes, if you continue within that same thread, consciously, unconsciously competent. You don't have to think about it anymore, right? Like riding a bike or brushing your teeth or anything, any sort of a technical skill you become proficient in. But I will add, you can be in two different buckets simultaneously, right? You could be proficient at coding in SQL, if you will, and learning Russian, right? You can be in two different buckets. But having that sense of self awareness also lends yourself to how you can see where others are in their own learning journey and giving each other grace and intentional pause to recognize where they are in that space. But I will also add the caveat that the sweet spot to stay within is consciously incompetent and consciously competent. Because that's where you continue to grow. That's where you can continue to learn more and apply those learnings and not have it become, you know, ripe and rotting because you're not just saying, I'm done. Right? You want to continue to learn, continue to operate within that growth mindset. And as you take in new information, find ways to apply it and continue to amplify against yourself. That's the intention. Okay? Any questions on this framework, on this model? No? Okay, perfect. We can go forward. So as mentioned in the previous session, retaliation is the most common violation. It is the most common discrimination claim filed within the EEOC, more common even than the underlying discrimination itself. Why is that? Because people who complain about discrimination often face consequences for speaking up, right? Let me be clear. If someone raises concerns about your conduct and then you treat them differently, more harshly, more skeptically, less cooperatively, that is retaliation. Nor nor no long hands about it. That is exactly what it is. And it is illegal. But their complaint was just baseless, as an example. Doesn't matter. Retaliation is illegal even if the underlying complaint is ultimately not substantiated. Or I'm just doing my job as a board member by asking the tough questions. But the question at hand is, did you ask these tough questions before the complaint was filed? Or did your behavior change after someone raised the concerns? Where was the pivot? Where did the behavior change and because of why? And you have to reflect on that. Where did it come from? So some things to think about for retaliation as red flags could be, oh, if you can go back one. There we go. Suddenly questioning every decision that a senior staff person may make after they've raised concerns about conduct, excluding them from information or communications, undermining their authority with staff, making negative comments about their judgment or credibility, and proposing increased oversight that may feel punitive. These are all red flags that constitute retaliation. So courts and reviewing certain allegations look at timing and pattern. So if your behavior changes after a complaint is filed, you may be asked to explain why. And the the response of, I'm just being thorough, won't be convincing if that wasn't the same behavior or pattern before the complaint was filed. Okay? Any thoughts or questions on that? You feel good? Yep? Okay, now we can move forward. So where is the line? We all need to know where is the line? What is appropriate versus what is inappropriate? So here's where it can get nuanced, and you may have some questions. So the statement of, well, how do I do my oversight without crossing the line into harassment? Here is that framework, right? Appropriate oversight is about the work, the results, the data and the institutional interests. That's it. It's professional, it's consistent, and it's focused on legitimate governance concerns, right? Harassment, on the other hand, is about the person. It makes it more personal. It's repetitive, it's aggressive, it's based on stereotype or bias. And it creates an environment where the person feels targeted or unsafe. Okay? So here's the test. Here's where you can kind of start looking through a different filter or lens. So imagine if you're asking these same questions or making these same demands of someone with a different identity, right? Different gender, different race, different ability, different age. Would you do it the same way? Would you ask the same things? Would you ask the same questions, the same tone? If not, then you need to think about why. What's causing the difference in behavior? What's causing the the adjustment in how you address someone? Right? When we think about bias, it's it's unconscious. We don't always recognize it. And it could be in direct conflict to how we say what are our principles and our values. We have to start naming it to mitigate it. And every single person on this planet has bias. No one is immune to it. And it doesn't have to become a negative thing until you start using it attributable differently. And this is where we need to think about, is it conscious, unconscious and how that applies to the interaction at hand? Okay? So another question could be, how would an outside observer perceive your conduct? Right? If someone watched a video of your interactions, would they see professional oversight or personal targeting? So an example could be, appropriate question would be, I'd like to see the data on student retention rates for the past three years so we can assess whether our interventions are working. Factual. Inappropriate could be, I don't trust your analysis. I want the raw data and I want to see your methodology and I want to talk to the person who compiled it. Frankly, I'm not sure you understand the issue. Can we see the difference? Where one is talking directly about the numbers, directly about policy and how the efforts may have been impacted by those strategies. Whereas the inappropriate is you're making it about the person and questioning their competency. Right? So one is about the data. One is about undermining the person. Do we see the difference? Yes? Okay.
To summarize, issues rather than people.
Yes, correct. But focus on fact and not the story.
Understood.
Yep. Perfect. So let's go into a little bit deeper into the real consequences as it pertains first for the institution. So financial exposure is real. Discrimination settlements and jury awards, as mentioned before, can run into millions of dollars. Even defending against claims costs hundreds of thousands in legal fees. We all just heard this a moment ago. Federal funding can be at risk. As a recipient of federal financial assistance, Lain must comply with civil rights laws and violations can result in loss of funding. Right? We've seen this in the news every day. Different institutions being targeted for not upholding certain, you know, laws or feeling that they're not upholding certain laws of certain individuals. Funding can be pulled. As well as reputation matters. When boards make headlines for misconduct, it affects enrollment, donor relationships, community support credibility and the ability to recruit excellent leaders. Every single strata of the organization can be impacted and exposed and you don't want to do that to yourself. So for you as individual board members, personal liability means your assets could be at risk. You may face personal legal fees. Your reputation in the community can be permanently damaged. You can be censured publicly or asked to resign. But here's what matters most. Why are we all here? Why are you on this board? It's the impact on the students, right? You wouldn't be here if you didn't believe in the mission, I would hope, right? Students didn't sign up for board dysfunction, right? They are believing in you to work as a single unit in serving their greater good and supporting their growth, their second chance, their continued education, their ability to make their own economic mobility opportunity a reality. They're here to get an education that changes their lives. So when board members engage in misconduct or participate in different bias, harassment, discrimination situations, it diverts leadership's attention, consumes resources and undermines the mission that you're all here to serve. Every dollar spent on legal defense is a dollar not spent on student resources, on faculty development or program excellence. One headline can deter any sort of credibility and it takes so much longer to come back from that. So I would say you owe it to the students in a way to govern with integrity and professionalism. That's why you're here. So let's not misconduct be the headline going forward. Let's not have it derail why we're all here. Okay? So you can go forward. So I have in front of you, hopefully you have some scenarios in front of you. One that I'd like us to review quickly, right? Just being mindful of time, is the one that says the retaliatory pattern, scenario three. So the situation here is, and again, these are all just made up names. So after President Velez raised concerns about a board member Cory's conduct in executive session, Cory's behavior changed. Cory now asks every report Velez presents, asks for extensive documentation on routine matters, makes comments like, I need to verify this itself, suggests the board needs more oversight of the president and tells other board members, I'm not sure we can trust her judgment. Do we see anything wrong or inappropriate about this scenario?
His behavior changed.
Mm-hmm. Right? So what would you say, what laws or principles were violated?
Retaliation.
What would you say should have happened instead? This is a safe place. This is why we're here.
Well, a question I have in regards to, you suggest that the board needs more oversight. Oh, wait, wait, I see, I see. So it's essentially more specifically about the president. Yeah, so essentially, but if they just said a simple statement of that there needs to be more oversight, that's then the issue.
On what grounds, right? Is it because they didn't agree with the president's decision or approach? And because they didn't like it, now they require more oversight, right? To your point, that's retaliation. That's going after the individual and not necessarily the facts of what's causing the oversight to be suggested.
100%. But if you, like, if you just removed the president from, or it could be administrator, it could be a person, it could be whatever. It's just about more oversight needed.
Correct. But on what grounds? You know, what was provoking it, right? Is the question. Mm-hmm.
More oversight because the community is requesting us as board members to have more oversight and judicial or fiduciary responsibility over things.
Sure. But it also to, and we'll get into this in a moment, but within the space of governance and now within getting into the management space.
Understood.
That's where there's a very clear line because again, as mentioned before in the previous session, you want to mitigate risk of not overstepping. I mean, very clear what governance stands for or what management means.
Of course, yeah. And when I was seeing oversight, I was thinking like governance as opposed to day-to-day operations, so.
Right. And that's where also you need to get deeper as to what oversight is required, to what degree and to what timeline. All those different components are required.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course. Any other comments in regards to the scenario that we just discussed? Yes, please.
Looking at the scenario, it seems to me that this member Cory has some issues, some personal issues with being called out on their actions. What they looked at instead of looking at their actions, looking at what, why the president brought up this concern, they're undermining what the president higher up is saying. And instead of looking at the issue, like we talked about earlier, they're looking at the person.
Correct.
The person and their work. And like saying things like, you need to verify this themselves, actively undermines the work that the president, their constituents, put into what they're presenting. The facts. Instead of looking at the facts, looking at how they got there and saying, I don't trust this.
Exactly. Yeah. So it was mentioned before, it's not focusing on factor issue, but going after the person specifically.
Yeah.
So thank you. Great. I think we got that one, gotten that one buttoned up. So thank you. All right. So it really is when we're thinking about the key points of that is thinking about the behavior and not just the isolated incident. Is it a pattern? Is there a consistency to it, right? It's the impact on the recipient and the institution, not always just the situation. And that intent doesn't excuse impact. I could intend for you to take it a certain way, but do you receive it that way? Is the impact the same? And a lot of times you have to think about the impact that will inform the intent. Okay? And also what would a bystander see? How would they interpret that situation? And how would you interrupt problematic conduct going forward? Okay? So some things to noodle on.
Would you answer that question number four, force? What should, you know, if you were another board member in that scenario, right? You saw Cory, what she behaved. What would you recommend?
I would ask questions of like, well, tell me more. Why do you think this is required? What is the issue at hand and how can we address this more specifically within the concern that's being brought up versus making it about the president? Right? So it's redirecting to the issue at hand versus diving deeper into the presidential relationship between that individual and the board president. So it's again redirecting, like, help me understand why. How do we mitigate this? How do we then put guardrails up so that we understand this doesn't persist? And so again, we're focusing on the fact and the issue and redirecting away from the person. Does that help? Any other questions before we proceed? Nope? Okay, perfect. So next we'll move into governance versus management, right? So I'll use an example. When I was joining a school board many moons ago, it was a very simple example, but I still use it to this very day is the board approves the budget to buy the paint, as an example. The staff, the president then choose the color of the paint, right? Very different distinctions. So it's not the board telling the president or the staff what color the paint should be, but you're approving from an oversight governance perspective, the budget for the paint and leaving the decision for the paint up to the staff. Do we see the distinction?
It's hard to imagine board staying out of the color choice, honestly.
I mean, the president provide direction and it's really, you know, the president is following the direction of the board. But you want to be very focused on operations and management from a staff level. The day-to-day is for the staff to manage. Governance is from the board perspective, more strategic, more oversight, thinking broad brush over the stewardship of the organization.
Understood. Use that analogy. The board has, in that scenario, the board has a responsibility to the homeowner. And in that analogy, the public, right? And what the public is asking of the house, right? So there is kind of that fiduciary responsibility to the public, the homeowner, in this analogy, to have a governance and oversight role of, for instance, the color. That color would cause additional liabilities. Those colors could mess with dynamics within the community. Those colors could impact a variety of different outcomes, right? And providing that guidance, that input and so forth is a part of governance. Not necessarily direct management of the day-to-day operations. We're not painting the wall.
Right.
But we are.
You're approving, but you're thinking more broad brush as a financial and fiduciary steward of the organization. You're ensuring that the budget is balanced and healthy, that you have budget dollars to approve the president and our staff to then go paint the building, right? So it's not like, or you know, it's not like our colors, I'm just going to make something up, burgundy, gold and black, and then I'm going to go paint it yellow. That'd be a total, you know, sidestep of the organization, of the branding of the organization.
Yeah.
But there has to be relationship. But you're not saying, we as a board say you have to go paint it black if there's not a conversation because you're approving the budget and it's up to the day-to-day management to uphold standards of the organization, but it's up to the management of operations of the staff to make those decisions. So I'll go into the next slide. That may be helpful. Yeah. That may be helpful. Yeah. So in this context, when we're thinking about it, it's critical that we get this right because it can cause confusion, right? So let's be crystal. The board governs, president manages. Separate functions remain separate for institution to operate effectively. So your job is to set the destination and make sure that we're heading in the right direction. The president's job is to steer the ship, navigate the waters and to get us there, right? So your job though is not to take on the wheel. So as board members, when you cross the line into management, several things can happen, all of them creating confusion, dysfunction. You could undermine the president's authority, confuse who on staff, who's in charge, you know, make decisions without full operational knowledge, expose yourself in the institution to liability, prevent the president from doing their job and violate fiduciary duties. So some examples could be, you know, you're implementing, the president implements board policies, makes operational decisions, reports to the board and leads the institution. Whereas the board, your goals and your directives are to set the mission, vision, values, focusing on those policies the president is then going to execute, ensuring financial health and legal compliance and speaking as one voice, right? There's not one individual board member that can speak on behalf of the whole board unless you all dictate that as a joint body, right?
Yeah. So kind of my example was around provide strategic oversight, for instance.
Yep. A painting, a choice of a paint color would not be strategic oversight. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
But that's not, that's not, that's more of a tactic of a strategy. That's not the strategy, like a long-term plan.
Again, I'm trying to use your analogy.
Sure. I mean, I should, so it was an example. So we were starting a new school from scratch. We were a new K three, K G through fifth grade. We were, I didn't need to tell the school principal what color to paint the school because she had already provided that kind of brand packaging of what the school would look like. We needed to approve the budget so that make sure she had the resources to go and deliver on her, on her, on her mission, on her objective. So it's having that clear delineation of how, where do we have to kind of cut that line of telling her how to do her job on the day-to-day when we're looking at her overall performance?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, say. What are your thoughts about when you come across a situation as a board member potentially where there are actions being taken that you think are contradictory to policy? Or so, for example, for your analogy, if there was a desire to start using a toxic paint that was going to, you know, maybe poison the environment? Do you come back to the 30,000-foot policies? Do you, do you get involved in the, you know, uplift that action and say, can we talk about this action? And is this really, you know, how does this fit within our policies? Any thoughts on?
Definitely. So, yeah, it would definitely be something to be brought up, bring it to the president's attention and bring it up as a point of conversation within the board. You know, if it's in conflict or in direct negating the policies that you have set up as an institution, definitely talk about it. But it's not one individual going rogue and kind of talking off to the side and then making, you know, different influential conversations. It's coming together as a unit, as a body to address it with the certain controls in place so that all the different Robert's Rules, if you will, are upheld and, yeah, are upheld.
Got you.
Yeah.
So essentially having a conversation in a public meeting brings it into that governance structure.
Correct.
Excellent.
Yep. So follow the chains of command so that it's very clear on where the responsibility, the authority lie.
So even though it's operations, the fact that it's in conflict with board policy is, it's a reasonable thing to talk about.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Perfect. Okay. We can go to the next slide. And so as a board member, it's also very thoughtful and intentional to be mindful of your legal obligations. So having duty of care, duty of loyalty. And this otherwise is known as duty of, duty to obey, but I don't like that. So I changed it to commitment to mission. So duty of care, early being informed, again, attending meetings, asking questions, making decisions based on facts and institutional interests, right? You can't be asleep at the wheel. You have to be ready and be asking questions through the appropriate channels, like you had just brought up, and making decisions based on the best interests of the institution overall and not personal preferences or personal agendas. Okay? Duty of loyalty means the institution comes first. And we may be on multiple different boards of different organizations, but when you are here, you are here in line with the organization that you are serving within that, within that moment, right? No personal agenda, not any dislike of any staff or president or her friend who wants a contract. It's the institution that comes first. This also maintains, this requires confidentiality. So what happens in exec session stays in executive session. You don't share information outside of that confinement, outside of that moment You don't share information outside of that confines, outside of that moment to either undermine or score points in a different, you know, context or scenario. And then commitment to mission, ensuring the college follows the law and its own policies. Ironically, you could violate this when you yourself don't follow the law, right? Like Title VII requirements that we had just discussed. But here's what these duties do not include. They don't give you authority to manage operations. They don't let you override the president on operational matters. They don't mean you get to insert yourself in personnel decisions, nor do they authorize you to investigate issues on your own. Your fiduciary duties are fulfilled through collective board action and not individual behavior. You are operating as one fell voice, one unit, okay? So you can move on. So what can board members do, right? So what are, what are within the lines of, in the confines that you can operate within? So let's be specific. I want you to still feel empowered, right? Of course, do your job effectively, but just understanding what those boundaries entail. You can and should request information, saying, I'd like to see enrollment data by program. Can we get a report on Title IX complaints? These are appropriate requests to the president. You can and should ask questions in board meetings. That is oversight. But there's a difference between questions and interrogation. Questions seek information, interrogation seeks to intimidate. You can propose policies, as in, I think we need a policy on X, Y and Z. Great. The board can discuss it, vote on it. If it passes, the president implements, you move forward. You can evaluate the president. That's literally one of your most important roles and jobs as a board member, but through an established process based on clear criteria done collectively as a board, but not through individual campaigns of criticism. You can raise concerns and if you're worried about something, talk to the board chair. If it's serious, the board addresses it, you don't go on your own, right? Everything has to flow through proper channels. The board chair is your first stop for questions or concerns. Board chair works with the president, the board acts collectively. This protects everyone, you, the president and the institution. Again, you don't want to open yourself up to liability as we just talked about within the insurance conversation, right? Does Beadok take you so far? Yes, Julie?
So I just, I just want to bring back some context. Trusty Mulholland raised around toxic paint. The distinction between voting for a policy, asking questions about a concern. I just want to make sure that your answer was like, sure, bring it up, ask a question. I've been in those meetings. They run afoul of, I think, what you're intending to communicate. So I just want to make sure that we bring it back a little bit. The board can say, hey, I have some concerns about this toxic paint or I've heard, is there, are you aware of that? Can we get any reporting about that? And if they're still unsatisfactory, then the board has the ability to say, or that particular board member can say, I think we should create a policy around the use of toxic paint.
Yep.
It isn't a motion made in a meeting to stop the president from using toxic paint.
Correct.
And so I just want to have you kind of discuss the difference between a policy and a motion that is directed into operations. Could you speak to that distinction a little bit?
Yeah. So it really is, what are you putting on paper that's going to be the guideline going forward versus an in the moment sort of decision against a situation in the moment, right? So it's what are those guidelines that we're going to keep ourselves accountable for going forward that affect the whole organization and not just the situation at point? So using Julie's example, yes, we no longer want to have the comfort, you know, the opportunity of toxic paint being an option going forward. Let's put a policy as it pertains to what are certain resources or materials that are appropriate to have on campus, one of which could be toxic paint is not allowed, it is prohibited, right? So that is a policy that the president and staff with the need to uphold versus no toxic paint and then being done with it, right? It's not a motion in the moment because then you could have with those like 50,000 times over the course of a year. But what could be that umbrella policy that would be more of a mitigation of risk going forward that would help to create that safety for those that are operating within the organization? Does that help, Julie?
Yeah, and it allows for the why, it allows for the bigger picture, it allows for the intention of, of what we're all looking for because that's part of the strategic direction, the oversight of the organization, keeping us up here.
Correct.
And not down here.
Yep, exactly. Thank you for that. Any questions on that example?
Yeah, to a certain degree. So essentially, it is, you can bring up a policy or color of paint, or color of paint that is using toxic, and you could bring that up in discussion. You can then have a meeting to then go over that policy or a process of, hey, reviewing toxic paint. And that in itself is all within governance. It's part of discussion that's open to the public and it either passes or doesn't.
You would motion to create a policy to ensure that toxic paint does not persist or is not part of the consideration going forward, right? But it's not a motion to prevent operational decisions of choosing the paint, but ensuring like as, so to the context of what is the, what is the context? What is the, the larger picture that we're trying to stay in as more of that governance, right? The strategy and not necessarily the paint in and of itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you don't like a decision that's being made, sort of sucks for you, get ahead of it for the next time?
Majority rules on the board.
Well, just, I mean, we had a situation, let's, you know, there was a, we had a vote, right? I lost, you know, okay, no big deal. I think there's some folks feel I shouldn't have made the motion, right? Like, I, I, I mean, I think I'm hearing two different, well, I think what I'm hearing you say is if you don't like something that's moving forward that you think should be against the rules, you should basically change the rules, but allow the, allow the current thing to move forward, you know, rather than stopping it in its tracks and changing the rules both for the current thing and future things. You should let the current thing go through and just, just talk about the policy that would affect future things and not dive into the matter that is immediately in front of you that seems to be against board policy or, you know, sustainability or whatever it is.
I wouldn't necessarily that you just have to, you know, allow what the current practices that you feel is in conflict to policy just to pass through as you're the only lone voice. But if there's a board review of that policy and there's a majority vote that feels that whatever is the situation at hand is still upholding within that policy, you can voice, you know, you can voice concern. But it's not a matter of you trying to just force a personal agenda or a certain issue that you have. It's a matter of if we're all reviewing the same information and there's a majority vote that we are upholding said policy based on the current situation, then you have to move forward with that. But your, your, what's the, your dissension, if you will, will be captured in the notes so that you are, your voice is being heard, but you still have to operate as a majority vote as an organization with the same voice.
So it sounds like it's particular to the situation and that some situations you might want to say this operational thing is going against board policy or board policy needs to change. And other times it's not as critical and you can say, we can let this thing move forward, but we should come back to that 30,000 foot for things moving forward.
You always want to maintain at that higher level oversight position. You don't want to get into the weeds because that's where you can get, you know, more sticky and you could open yourself more up to risk. But again, it, everything is, you know, to the previous presentation, it depends. You have to understand the severity, the context, the implications, the exposure, the influence and the impact of those, the decisions being made so that you have to take all that into context.
Thank you.
Yeah. For sure.
By the way, appreciate the conversation. Obviously, this is a safe space to have this conversation, so immensely appreciate the discussion here. Thank you.
Yes, of course. So we can move forward to the next slide then. So this may help clarify further. So what board members may not do in crossing the line into management? You may not give orders to staff, right? Do not go to the dean, not to the facilities director, not to administrative assistant. They don't work for you. They work for the president and her staff. But a comment could be, but I just asked them to send me some information. You asked, but to staff, a board member asking can feel like an order. You have positional power. Please use it appropriately, consider what that means. You have privilege and, you know, which means that you need to go through the president. You may not evaluate or supervise staff outside of the president herself. She is, she reports to you. You could say, I told the dean I wasn't happy with her performance. That's not within your job. That's not within your role. That's the president's job. If you have concerns about staff performance, raise it with the president and the president is going to address it. You may not make unilateral decisions. Well, you're one member of a board. The board acts collectively through votes in properly noticed meetings and you don't have individual authority. You may not undermine board decisions. The board voted, majority decision proceeds. You don't then go to the community or staff saying, well, I didn't support this. That's undermining the board and the president. That breaks your credibility as a governing unit. And you may not create separate communication channels that bypass the staff or the president, I should say, but have a good, so you could say, well, I have a good relationship with the dean, so let me just talk to them directly. You're circumventing the proper channels of responsibility, of command. You're creating confusion about the authority and undermining the president's ability to lead. So here's a reflective question or a test. If you have to ask yourself, should I run this by the president first? Yes. The answer is yes. If you're doing any of these things currently, please stop, okay? Because you're causing more confusion than you're maybe, I'm just going to circumvent the situation, I'll just handle it quickly. It's causing more implications and confusion than, than helping. Okay. I see you're noodling, Austin.
Oh, I'm just thinking. Hope it's a safe place to.
Of course, yes.
Think, okay.
Of course, 100%. We're all learning here together.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean, I don't want to be called out.
Space if you were thinking about.
Totally, totally, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I was jigging, just thinking.
Yeah, okay. I'll get, didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I just wanted to give you space if you had a question.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. So we can go to the next slide, please. So what does it mean to support versus undermine authority? So let's talk about what it looks like. So you hired President Bulger to lead this institution. Either you can trust her to do that or you don't. If you don't, there's a process for that, right? Performance evaluation and potential separation. But you don't get to keep her in her job while making it impossible for her to do her job, right? You can't set her up and not have her be successful and getting in her way. So supporting the president means giving them the authority to manage, directing your questions and requests appropriately, addressing concerns constructively and privately, backing board decisions even when you disagreed and defending the president's operational authority when others may challenge it. So let's be specific. If a community member complains to you about an operational decision, you can say, the board sets policy, the president implements it, I trust President Bulger to make good operational decisions. If you have concerns, I encourage you to speak with her. That's how you can address it, right? Any thoughts or questions on that? That make sense? Yes, please.
From a student perspective, would you also recommend if a student has a problem with any operations, would they also bring it to the president?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, for sure. So one thing to think of then is like, well, I wasn't happy with that either. So you're kind of getting in the circle with that person. You're not helping the situation. You're like, oh, I don't know what she was thinking. You are then going in cahoots, if you will, with that same person and not upholding your role as a privileged board member on, on behalf of the organization, right? So undermining the president can look like creating a pattern of public skepticism about their judgment, asking for extensive documentation that you may not ask of others, making it clear you're watching closely because you don't trust them, encouraging staff to come to you directly with concerns rather than the president, contradicting the president in front of others and using your position to intimidate or create stress. Okay? So here's a reflective question that you can just think of and answer in your own head. Have you been more in a supportive or an undermining role on your, as your role on this board, right? So think about your interactions with, with President Bulger and the staff. Would you say you've been supported or would you say you've been working in contrary to her success? So that's just something for you to reflect on. So you can move on to the next slide, please. And we have another quick case scenario we can take a look at. This one is the micromanaging one. Let me find out where that one is.
Scenario two.
Scenario two, thank you. I just had to flip my paper. Okay. So as an example, again, these are all made up names, made up scenarios. So board member Chen is concerned about custodial services. So instead of raising it with the president, Chen visits the facilities director directly and says, I'm not happy with how clean the buildings are. I want you to show me your staffing schedules and explain why you're not doing a better job. This reflects poorly on the board. So would you say that board member Chen operated within appropriate guidelines as a board member?
No.
No, okay. Do we all agree with that? Okay. What governance boundaries are crossed here, do you think?
Went straight to staff.
Okay, anything else? Yes, please.
Well, looking into concerns, personally looking into operations instead of going to the president and going directly to the person, putting it on the person and acting, also acting as an individual instead of consulting the whole of the board.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? How should Chen have handled this differently?
If the cleaning of the buildings was part of like a, a board report, for instance, we would ask the president through that, hey, board member, as board member Chen, I've noticed that some of the buildings are not being cleaned per the reports. I have some questions. May I ask questions directed to that? The president then assigns someone to answer that question and/or respond to that. Exactly. And, and go from there.
Thank you. And what would you say, yes, please go ahead.
I would add an amendment to that and have a private conversation with the president before a public meeting, so there's no surprises.
Totally. I was just putting it in the context of a, of a board meeting, so.
Yep, very good. So what would you say the president should do when they learn about this? Many thoughts? Yes, please.
I would say going along the chain of command, go to whoever is the supervisor or manager for the clean facilities for all of the buildings and bring the issue to them so that they can then bring it to them, their employees.
Yep, exactly. So the president would have the conversation directly, right? And what would you say the facilities director, how should they respond?
Well, I'm not a board member, well, I'm not supervising that employee, so I can't tell them what to do.
Any other thoughts? So how should the facilities director respond? Should they go back to the board member or go directly to the president?
President.
Yeah, yeah. So in this situation, as, as we've mentioned, the board member completely bypassed the president. The board member gave what amounts to an order to staff. The board member implied the facilities director reports to the board, right? This can create confusion, undermines authority and is inappropriate. And the correct approach is that the board member raises concern with the president and then the president addresses it. So the facilities director is an impossible position here. They, they see you as a positional privilege of, you know, power. They don't want to, you know, cause, create and any tension or conflict, but then being pressured by a board member, they have to report it to the president, right? This is where we have to be very clear where boundaries matter. Thank you. So moving forward then, we can look at governing through an inclusive lens, right? So what does this mean? How do we show up with intention and it's an inclusive lens? So we can go to the next one, please. So why inclusion and belonging matters in governance, okay? So your decisions impact lives. It's not just about political correctness. This is about fulfilling your fiduciary duty to serve all students, not just some students, right? So Laying Community College has a mission to provide accessible, quality education. Accessible means accessible to everyone, regardless of race, regardless of those, those protected characteristics, background, identity, all of that. So recognizing that every decision you make has to have and be thoughtful through an equity implications lens, okay? Budget decisions determine which programs get resourced. Policy decisions determine who has access and who faces barriers. Hiring decisions determine whether leadership reflects the community, right? Facility decisions determine whether campus is accessible and welcoming. Do you have the curb cuts? Do you have different ramps? Do you have different things to think about for, for different individuals and their abilities? Strategic priorities determine whose success you're measuring and valuing. So you're not explicitly considering equity in your decisions. You're likely reinforcing existing inequities. You're perpetuating what's been done and not thinking about what's going to get you there and how you may have to change behavior and pattern. The status quo is not neutral, right? It reflects historical patterns of exclusion and disadvantage, right? That's why we may have seen DEI had such a highlight in its heyday, but I think it was, it was tainted in a way that it got away from its original objective of creating equity and opportunity that wasn't intentional for hundreds of years. So it had to have a spotlight for a few years so that we had to kind of course correct in a way. And it became weaponized against its true objective of creating accessibility and opportunities to those that historically have not had it. Because those that were positional power of privilege would persist with that same familiarity and not think differently about being broader and targeted and thinking differently about where the constitution was created to the current state of where our country is now. So they're just being thoughtful of that. So when we think through a lens of inclusion and consideration and belonging, you think about who benefits from this decision? Who might be harmed or left out? Who's not at the table if we're not thinking about this? Are we measuring the right outcomes? What assumptions are we making? What angles are we not considering? Who's not in the room and how do we get their input, right? And how does this advance our mission of serving all students? And I use an example, when I used to work for a large Fortune 500, and I would say, if we're making a decision that's going to affect a diverse group of population, right? Age, you know, position, affluency, ability, all of that, we need that perspective in the room to make that decision. Doesn't mean that person has to be of that same affinity, but they have to have reasonable perspective to stand on that, that point of view so that you have a broader context of information to make a broader aperture of decision making from versus just your own sense of historical perspective. Okay? That make sense? Yes. So, yes.
And with, I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I feel like a big part of being able to understand in an equity lens is there's structural stuff and there is also dynamic stuff within those structures, right? So like, for instance, we start out our meetings in the agenda with an equity lens, asking a series of six questions to be like, hey, how are these policies impacting? How are these budgets are impacting this population and so forth? How cuts or growth in different programs affects a population and so forth? So that is an encourageable thing to continue to do. It is a good thing to even reference that in board conversations and in discussions It is a good thing to even reference that in board conversations and in discussions in the public, right?
Yep. And then giving space to have the conversation.
Fantastic. The other thing is also going within those communities to ask questions of like, hey, what are barriers to that? We have, for instance, a neurodivergence duty union. I have lots of questions of what are policies that are impacting you? What are policies that are barriers to you? What are structures that are impacting you? And being able to ask those questions of those communities, I see is a role of a public official to reach out to those communities and listen.
I would work in partnership with staff to have those conversations. Because then we see you as a board member and may not understand the context of why you're asking, how you're asking, how the information is going to be used. But if it's coming through the capacity of the organization of the community college to understand like a stay interview in a way, or how, how we be more accessible, more cognizant of your needs or what's a barrier, then it's coming through the lens through the college versus a concerned citizen. Because you, you're wearing multiple hats.
Understood.
And they may not always see that. So working in partnership with the school to say, how are we thinking differently about our neurodivergent students? How are we providing them resources? And then providing some conversation about what questions can we ask? And then having the staff be the ones having that conversation, then can report back to their findings. And then you can have a conversation of how do we need to address or adjust our approach.
Fair. Outside of the institution, so a neurodivergent, um, I'll just use an example. Just group outside of the institution. Me attending that as a board member is perfectly within the reason of a public official reaching out within those communities. Or let's say going to the Hispanic community leadership meeting and asking them questions outside of the institution, of course, in the situation. That is all within the realm of a public official who is reaching out to their community. Or reaching out to the community as a whole.
Is that, is that a question?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, correct. Yeah. That's, that's well within our rights, right?
I would say yes. Does anyone would feel different? Amelia, yes, please.
I would just like to note that as someone who sits on the Student Success Council, I personally would love to hear your questions and concerns so that I could bring this to my fellow students. And I'm sure the rest of student government would love to hear about the questions that you're wanting to bring to these different groups.
Yeah, I would love that, yeah.
Well, I just have to say also that it would be helpful. I, I don't, I want you to talk about Samantha, whether the, how the board members separate their role as a public official and as a board member. And some have offices, they're officers on the board. And how they can separate that from any interactions in the community. Because I think that's what our board chair is actually referring to is I can separate myself if I'm understanding, I'm a public official in this setting, I'm a board member in another setting. Can you speak to that? Because I think that, that that's, that that's really the question. I would certainly prefer if, if you're talking to people in the community in your role as a board member, because you want what the information you, you hear to bring to bear on the college, then you engage with the president.
Yes. Correct. So it's being very clear which hat you are wearing when you're in the community. If it's pertaining to anything with the college, you work in partnership with the president. If it's you're operating within the, the space of a public official having a concern, that's going to operate beyond the school. And that's a very different hat to wear. But if there has any relationship or context pertaining to the college, then you work in partnership with, with the president.
Even if it's educational in nature?
Because you are operating on behalf of the organization. You don't want.
Yeah, yeah, well, of course. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. Don't, I'm regarded as to a public official.
Yeah, you'd want, you would want to make very kind of clear church and state in a way, the hat that you're wearing.
Yep, understood. Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. So being mindful of, how much time do I have left? I'll be mindful of time here.
Oh, yeah, Kevin.
Yeah, I think this is an important point to, to, to spend some time on. Because as trustees on a board of education, we have different responsibilities and much more narrowly defined responsibilities than other elected officials. For example, a city councillor or a county commissioner. And so I, I'm trying to, I'm listening to this conversation. I'm trying to figure out if there would be an example of where I would go out into the community as an elected official and gather information or receive feedback on issues that wouldn't be pertaining to L C C. I don't, I don't see how those two connect. I think if I went out into the community, and I could be wrong, but I'm just thinking if I went out in the community, I'm always going to be an L C C board member because that's my elected position. So I'm, I'm interested if you could just comment briefly more on that.
It's really about what is the intention? Again, what is the impact of what am I trying to accomplish here? And if it has to pertain, so it's like being very forthright in the role that you are living as a board member on behalf of this institution. And if it's, and I was seeing a distinction, if you were like a public official as like, I'm just saying, board supervisor sort of situation, you're thinking about a larger constituency beyond just the confines of the school. Right? So that's a very different context. If you're thinking about operating as a, as an elected official on behalf of a board or of a school board, then you have, when you work in partnership with the president, every very clear chain of command so that they don't see you as one voice representative on behalf of the board, but you're operating within a unit. Does that make better sense? Yes. Yes.
So for instance, like if someone came up with me, came up to me with concern, my response would be, I will bring that to the president.
Correct.
Excellent. If I am trying to learn about something that's within, in this case, communities that have been marginalized and I want to learn more about like those, I'm, I'm trying to use my words carefully here, but like the struggles they go through, the barriers and so forth, that I can go and learn from that and, and ask questions and gain knowledge. So I can better than when we have discussions at a board meeting about those policies, budgets, so forth. Be able to better kind of understand what that community is going through and how we can have a discussion.
Better serve them.
To better serve them.
I would raise those conversations and those concerns at a board meeting and saying, how can we work in partnership with you, with the institution to dig deeper into what those barriers and those accessibility issues are?
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
It's a great question. That's a great answer, actually. Thank you.
For sure.
One quickie?
Yes, of course.
Let's say I got invited to give a radio interview, maybe a half hour. And the question was, what have you learned in your first three months as, as board member of L C C? And it's a, so I, I would state, let me see if I am tracking correctly.
Yeah.
I would state, I'm here only as one board member. I'm not speaking for the board. I'm not the chair speaking for the board. But I will give you my honest opinion about your, as you question me, I will, I will, I will respond with my opinion.
Yes, and, and I'm always about the yes and. I would work with the, with the marketing and the communications team of the, of the institution to ensure that you are consistent within your language, right? So you can have your personal opinion in speaking about what it means to be a board member on behalf of L C C, but also being consistent within the messaging on behalf of the organization. So you're not seen as a separate board member on behalf of the board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but you can't tell what kind of questions they're going to come up with. And so it's, it's a pretty wide open situation. And I, you know, I agree with Kevin. You, you, you don't shed your skin as a, as a board member. You're perceived that way. You are that way. And the questions are relevant to your service on the board.
Yep.
And you're offering your personal opinion. And it seems to me if you cover yourself by saying, I'm speaking only as one board member. Others, no doubt, will have different opinion about these questions. But these are my honest reflections on my first three months in office. Anything wrong with that approach?
I would also add, thinking about how you are upholding the, the mission and the brand of the organization, always wanting to speak in a positive light. So if there's any sort of dissension that you may have or any sort of, you know, personal feelings, those are not what is to be shared, but it's really speaking on behalf of the organization as a, as a fiduciary steward.
I totally agree. That would be outside my character to run down the institution. I'm, I'm trying to lift us up.
Yeah. Yeah.
In any case, can you speak to what position that puts the president in? When the president hears that a board member is speaking to, speaking on the radio and, and answering questions in the way that our trustees said?
Yeah, I mean, if they weren't aware of it in advance, it could put them in a very sticky situation. That's why I would say engage with them prior to, you know, to ever be going on the radio. You can even ask the radio station, what questions are you going to ask in advance? So you can prepare and create, you know, co-created talk tracks to ensure that every, every party is aware. And then if you, if there is an opportunity to speak on behalf from a personal lens while still being a, a positive financial steward or fiduciary steward, talking through what that could look like. So it's every, every party is very clear and can expect to what the conversation will look like. But you don't ever want to put the president in a compromised, surprised position. Because then again, there could be, it seems two different entities are working in opposites and not in, in coordination.
Yep.
Okay? Yes? Yes?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, moving forward. So let's go to the next slide, please. So now we're going to get a little bit deeper into what bias is. And again, like I'd mentioned before, we all have it. No one is immune from it. It is only how do we mitigate it from persisting and perpetuating? So what is, what is bias, right? It's attitudes or stereotypes that affect our understanding, actions and decisions in an unconscious manner, right? So these biases develop over time, through our lifetime, through exposure, directly and indirectly from media, through culture, our upbringing, personal experiences. But what makes it particularly challenging is that can often contradict our conscious values and our beliefs. We may explicitly support equality while still harboring unconscious bias, right? It's important though to remember that having biases doesn't necessarily make you a bad person. That's not it whatsoever. It makes you human. But the key is to be aware of them before they become something that is prejudicial, that turns into oppression and then becomes, you know, racism and all that matter. So, but where does bias come from? And in, not to get too, we can, sorry, move to the next slide. But where it comes from, if you want to get super sciency about it, and I'll try not to make it too sciency, is, is really based on the ancient wiring of our brain from when we were in our Cro-Magnon times. What was different was fatal. What is familiar is safe, right? So if it's, we operate that same way now, right? We had to kill for food. We had to kill the, you know, the tiger, what have you. And we have to manage our, our energy. We have to live on pattern. We had to conserve what we knew to be true so that if we were similar, we were safe. If it was different, it was fatal or it could be fatal. And we still operate with those same unconscious biases now, even though those are not the same concerns that we're dealing with to this day. But thinking about it now is a different sense of, of stimuli that we have to think about. It's not life or death, but just 11 million pieces of stimuli on a daily basis. There's no way we can process all of that stimuli. It's point 01% that we can actually digest and consider. And so we have to then think and apply those patterns of processing multiple points of information quickly. And a lot of times that's done emotionally, reflexively, and we miss information. We, we make patterns and decisions. We take action and inferences based on what we know to be true from what we've been exposed to throughout our life. And a lot of that times is then it perpetuates the bias and allows it to persist because we reinforce the patterns of what we know to be true, right? So here's a question for you. I'll, I'll create some context. There's two systems within our brain, if you will. System one and system two. System one is where we have to reflexively make decisions. We kind of just emotionally think about things. We don't, we kind of just have to actually act quickly and it just kind of gets us through our day. System two is we have to slow down. We have to think more intentionally. We respond with, with action and thought. And so I would love for you to think about what percentage of the time do you think we operate within system one thinking versus system two thinking? So just throw out a percentage.
Eighty, ninety percent?
Eighty, ninety for which one? System one or system two? System one, okay. Any other thoughts?
Well, it depend on, because it's initiated through fight or, fight or flight, right? So would there, well, please.
Bias happens every single moment of the day. It doesn't necessarily require if it's fight, flight or freeze. It's, you know, I see a red car. I don't like red cars, so I'm going to go and buy a blue car. I mean, it could something as innocuous as that, right?
Okay.
But it's again, how often of the day are we making more quick decisions, reactionary decisions based on pattern versus slowing down and considering all the different components of information and making more of an intentional decision? Another way to think about is like, if you've taken a long test and your brain hurts, that's more system two.
Okay.
So again, eighty, ninety percent in the system one space. Any other thoughts?
Yes, fast thinking, slow thinking, right? It's more fast thinking.
Yeah. Yeah. Amelia?
I would definitely agree with like eighty to ninety percent of the fast thinking. But then, I mean, for me personally, it's a lot of the fast thinking and then immediately, oh, I've processed it. Let me think on this for a little bit. So maybe like eighty-nine percent fast thinking.
I'm going to go with Price is Right rule it off.
I know. Bob Barker might.
Ninety-two percent.
Yeah. One dollar, right? Exactly. System one is ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the time. So that shows that three to five percent of the time we are slowing down and not letting pattern or inference define how we take action. And that's where bias lives. That's exactly where bias lives. We're not slowing down enough to think about, is what they're telling me really something I should be worried about? Is really my reaction triggered based on what? Is it based on a bias because I'm going to treat them differently because they're unfamiliar to me? I don't know how to pronounce their name correctly, so I'm not even going to engage. I automatically just cross the street because they look different. I, you know, I, I move my coat or my purse somewhere else because you're, they're different than what I'm familiar with. All of those things you may not think about, that's where bias lives and persists. And that's when you can start to become prejudicial and it kind of go and cascades into something more severe. That's where it happens. So now we know where it is and how it happens and how it can happen. And here again, just to kind of break it down, I'm sorry, next slide, is thinking about explicit versus implicit, right? Explicit is direct. You are aware of it. It operates consciously and you can verbalize. I prefer working with younger people, right? Or I prefer working with certain types of people, right? Implicit is indirect. You're not aware and it operates subconsciously, right? So spending more time with a certain gender without realizing it, right? Or when you walk into a store, you move your purse away because you see somebody that's different from you. That's where you're, where you can see it show up, right? Or if you're, if you're in a server, you go to certain tables first versus others because of the people that are sitting at those tables, right? So like I had mentioned before, next slide, please. Factors contributing to bias are cultural norms and expectations, governance and process, personal background and social stereotypes. And again, this is not meant to say that anyone's childhood or upbringing needs to be called into question. It's a matter of now that you have information and you are pulling more context into your consideration and consciousness, what is in alignment to how you want to live and based on those values and where maybe you need to change and adjust? That's all it is. You're at a point in time to make intentional course corrections, if you feel the need to, to make sure that you are in alignment with your values and your beliefs and that you are operating with an inclusive and considered lens as a board member. But how, why is it so hard and why does bias persist? Because we are human, because our brains can operate against us sometimes, right? Just think about when you were young, you wanted that gold star. It felt good to be right, right? So bias in a way perpetuates that rightness feeling, right? I did something that I feel to be familiar, feel to be true, based on all this other work of, of information, this body of, of experience from before. It's playing into that reward circuitry. When we get something wrong, we actually activate the pain center in our brain and we don't like it. We don't want to feel pain. We don't want to feel bad. We don't want to feel any sort of physical reaction visceral. And so our brains are wired to resist acknowledging bias because it has a real feel, a physical feeling that we feel. So it's the resistance to our susceptibility. I'm sorry, next slide. It's an unconscious nature of the cognitive bias and that is how it perpetuates. And it's rarely recognized or adequately managed because you have to face it to fix it. And this is where you have to start on peeling the onion of what, how are they systemically perpetuated? How are our decisions being made? Are who is at the table? Who needs to be at the table and so on? And how do these decisions affect our outcomes? And where is bias been imprinted and we didn't even realize it? And that's where you have to have really that, that thoughtful, intentional lens. Next slide, please. So what are some strategies to mitigate bias from an individual level, right? It's acknowledging that we all have it. And that there are actually implicit association tests that Harvard pushed out that are free, that you can do. Takes 10 minutes and they can be very, very telling and sometimes very shocking in a way. But it also shows how susceptible we are to mainstream media and how impacted we are by all the visuals and the, and the stories that come out, right? And having that practice of regular self-reflection. And then even maintaining a journal to say, once you've learned something, how are you putting these learnings into practice over like a two week cadence? And then having an accountable buddy, I like to call, right? Having someone that you can share with through your journey so they can also take an objective lens and help you through this as you're taking course forward. And thinking about clear, objective data, using, you know, different tools consistently and reviewing outcome data disaggregated by demographic factors, right? So if you were to remove the name off of a resume or if you were to remove certain identifying criteria, just looking at the facts in and of themselves will help prevent bias from perpetuating. Okay? So you can go to the next slide, please. So when we think about bias, when we think about harassment, now we're thinking about discrimination and how do we define that? So again, discrimination is treating people differently, less favorably because of who they are rather than the job of performance or their qualifications. So how can this show up for board members? It can show up in subtle ways. So holding certain female staff to different standards than you would, you know, senior male staff, questioning credentials of staff members of color than white staff or Caucasian, making assumptions about someone's abilities based on their age and treating someone differently after learning about their disability or sexual orientation. This all plays as discrimination. Right? And these are all part of protected characteristics that we talked about in title seven. So again, ask yourself, would I ask the same question, make the same demand or respond the same way regardless of their identity or how I perceive their identity to be? Right? Because there's a lot of characteristics and identities that are not physically seen or observed. Right? And so if you think the answer is no, if I would ask the same thing of anybody, then that would be discrimination. If you're, if you're having different treatment of different people based on how you're interpreting them, that's discrimination. So here's an example. If you routinely accept the male CFO's financial reports without question, but demand extensive backup documentation, let's say for female senior leader on routine matters, that is differential treatment. It's based on gender, conscious or not, that is still discrimination. Okay? Any thoughts or questions on that? Because the law requires equal treatment, not identical treatment. So equal treatment based on legitimate job-related factors, not protected characteristics. Yeah. Okay? Then we can go to the next slide, please. So then how does bias show up in board deliberations? Because again, like we all have it, I said. So bias is the unconscious shortcuts. It's the messages we've absorbed through our lives. And so how it can show up is saying as an example, I think we should hire the candidate with the most traditional credentials. Does that sound neutral? No? How would you define traditional credentials? From what lens? Right? Often this could mean credentials from elite institutions that have historically excluded people of color and low, low resource or low income students. You may be screening out excellent candidates because their path here looked different. Right? Or a female board member speaks up and gets interrupted. But a male board member may make the same point five minutes later and everyone says, that's great. Great idea. That's another example of bias. Right? I mean, I've had that. I brought up an idea, five minutes later, someone else says like, Kyle, you run with it. I'm like, wait a minute, I just said the same thing. You could scrutinize certain credentials more closely than you would someone else. You don't consciously think race is a factor, but somehow you need more proof or more reassurance from one person than another. That is another example of bias. You describe a woman as emotional or difficult when you describe a man making the same point as passionate or direct. That is bias. You assume LGBTQ plus issues are not relevant because we don't have many of those students here, but without considering that they may not be precisely out because the environment is not conducive nor they feel safe. That is also bias. Bias often sounds like, I don't see color. That is not good because you are negating the unique individual factors of that person. Right? You're not seeing the real barriers that they may face because of the color of their skin. Right? Or we're just looking for the best qualified candidates without examining who gets to be seen as qualified. How you define that? They just need to work harder without considering systemic barriers that are getting in the way. Right? Treat everyone the same, which may mean you're not meeting different needs equitably, considering their story, their experience. Right? So here's what you need to do. Acknowledge that you have bias. Again, everybody does. Right? Get courageously curious about what that is, what it is, rather than being defensive. Seek out perspectives different from your own. Listen when people point out bias and be willing to change your mind. Because we only know what we know up to that point. When we have new information, we need to find a way how to apply that and make our lexicon of understanding even that much greater. So you can go to the next slide. So microaggressions are another form of hostility that can happen. We've all done them, right? No one's immune from them. But there are subtle forms of discrimination that communicate negative messages about someone's identity. Have we heard the term of microaggression before? Yes. Okay. They're called micro not because they're small or insignificant, but because they're brief and often unintentional. The impact isn't micro, it's cumulative and harmful. So here's why they matter in governance. So imagine you're a board member of color and your white colleagues regularly interrupt you, ask you to speak for your entire race, express surprise at your credentials, question whether you got your position through diversity efforts or dismiss concerns about racism as being too sensitive. Okay? These are all microaggressions. Over time, that creates and can create a hostile environment. You don't feel valued, respected or psychologically safe. You may disengage or leave and that's the last thing you want. So the same dynamic affects students and staff. So when the board creates a culture where microaggressions are tolerated, it filters down through the entire institution. It doesn't just stay within the room. So common microaggressions in board settings, asking the only woman to take notes. Assuming someone's role based on their identity, complimenting someone's English, you know, how articulate you are, making jokes about age, ability or identity, touching someone's wheelchair, their body or their hair without permission. Again, if someone who's pregnant, right? Consistently mispronouncing someone's name and/or saying we all face challenges. Right? Which would be dismissive to specific experience of discrimination. Right? There's not a competition of oppression here. We've all had to go through life's challenges. Right? So, but here's what you can do. When you commit a microaggression, and you will, we all do, apologize briefly and then move on. Saying, I'm sorry, that was inappropriate. Let me rephrase. Or how would I better address? Right? It's a learning opportunity. When you witness a microaggression, interrupt it. You could say that comment is problematic. Let's stay focused on the issue at hand and as well as always educate yourself. Read, learn, ask questions in appropriate contexts, but not asking the person to re-traumatize themselves and having to educate you on everything. Do your own due diligence and then if you have questions, then bring it to them in an honest and trustworthy way. But you have to build the trust first to have that honest conversation. The goal is imperfection. The goal is awareness, effort and accountability. Okay? So next slide, please. So where to start? Again, microaggressions often go unnoticed, but could drive talent away. Micro and that refers to person-to-person interactions and macro is it refers to the systemic racism. Okay? So as an example, inappropriate or otherwise demeaning comments, for example, have been cited in recent litigation involving the ADA. So of 1,100 employees, they found that sixty-one percent have witnessed or experienced workplace discrimination based on age, race, gender and so on. So this is not new. This is not immune. This happens everywhere, but it's a matter of recognizing it and calling it to, to address it. Next slide, please. So whereas we're all maybe familiar with microaggressions, there's also three subcategories that we may not be familiar with. Micro assaults, micro insults and micro invalidations. So micro assaults are conscious and intentional actions or slurs such as using racial epithets. So that could include displaying swastikas or just, or deliberately serving a white person before a person of color in a restaurant. Micro insults are often unconscious and non-verbal that subtly convey rudeness and sensitivity and may demean a person's racial heritage or identity. So an example could be an employee who asks a colleague of color how she got her job, implying she may have landed it through an affirmative action or quota system. And then micro invalidations are often unconscious communications that subtly exclude, negate or nullify the thoughts, feelings or experiential reality of a person of color. So for instance, someone could ask an Asian American where they were born. Where are you from? Which would convey the message that they are perpetual foreigners in their own land. Right? We've had Asians here for generations and because they look different, we assume that they may not be from here. We've all seen the commercial on shirt, you know, where she then reverses it and he's like, what do you mean? So it's a matter of recognizing that everyone has their own story, but how do you approach it where you can also model, you know, where is your family from versus where are you from? Or tell me your story. Where were you born? Things of that nature that we all have, but not in a way that would make them feel othered. Because a lot of times it's something, it's othering someone where they don't feel that they belong. Okay? Um, next slide, please. So now that we know what could be getting in the way, how do then we create psychological safety? And it's really the foundation for effective governance. Right? Research is clear. Teams with psychological safety make better decisions, innovate more and perform better. Teams without it make poor decisions because people are afraid to speak up and engage. Think about board meetings. Can everyone speak freely? Or are some people walking on eggshells? Do some voices carry more weight than others? And do some people get interrupted while others don't? Can someone disagree with the majority without being ostracized? Can someone raise concerns about board member conduct without fear of retaliation? If the answer to any of these is no, then you don't have psychological safety unfortunately. And you're not governing as effectively as you can. So as a question to think on, how can you and does Lane have psychological safety? And what do you need to do differently going forward now? So how do you create it? We can go to the next slide. Here are six options or six different considerations. First and foremost, model respect. Disagree about ideas vigorously, but treat people with dignity. Right? And so we've all heard of the golden rule. Yes? How would we define the golden rule?
Treat others as you have to treat yourself.
Treat others how you want to be treated? Do we see how that could be limiting in a way? Also.
I've always thought, why shouldn't it be treat others as they want to be treated?
That is the platinum rule. So yes, exactly right. Because when you say treat others how you want to be treated, you're using yourself as the main story, as the filter for how everyone should be treated. Your upbringing could be very, very different from someone down the street. Your version and definition of what manners look like could be very, very different in someone else's culture. Right? Eye contact could be seen as respectful or disrespectful in some cultures. Right? Proximity to each other, how you, if you handshake or not, religious observations. They're all different and you have to meet people where they are. Right? A silly but funny example is if, if I'm a hugger and Kevin, you're not, I would treat you because I'm a hugger. I just come and hug you. Right? But I'm not considering you in that scenario. So a silly example, but sometimes it hits home in a different way. Right? So yes, platinum rule is treating others how they want to be treated. Um, so again, then also inviting dissent, asking the questions. Does anyone see risks that I'm not seeing? Right? What am I missing? Who has a different perspective? Responding well to bad news. So if someone tells you something you don't want to hear, thank them for their courage and address the issue. Acknowledge your own mistakes, saying I was wrong. I should have thought about that differently. And that gives others permission to be imperfect. It's always about progress and conversation and not the expectation of perfection. Interrupt disrespect. When someone is demeaning, interrupting or creating a hostile environment, call them in. It's different than calling out. So I know I have called it out here, but calling them in is very different because you're creating a safer space to address it versus putting them in a defense. Instead, we need to agree disrespectfully. And then enforce consequences. So if someone repeatedly violates these norms, what is the recourse? What is the consequence? Otherwise, the, these norms, these shared guidelines, these shared values will not have any weight. They'll be meaningless. Okay? So you can go to the next slide. So when we think about equity in board decisions that we were kind of touching on earlier, it's now we have to think about the practicality in your decision-making. So equality means everyone gets the same thing. Where equity means everyone gets what they need specifically to succeed. They're very, very different. Right? So example, equality is giving every student the same textbook. Where equity is making sure students with visual disabilities have accessible formats. Students who can't afford textbooks have access to free copies. And students whose first language is in English have appropriate support. Right? So before you vote on any policy, budget or strategic decision, ask these questions. Who will be most impacted? Often decisions that seem neutral affect different groups differently. Right? So cutting evening classes as an example may seem like a budget solution, but it disproportionately affects working adults, parents and students with jobs. Right? Have we heard from diverse stakeholders? If you're making a decision about student success and you only talk to traditional age full-time students, you're missing the majority of community college age students. Are we making assumptions? Students don't want online classes. Might be true for some, but completely wrong for others. So what does the data say? What do diverse students say? What are their needs? What barriers might this create or remove? So a new policy requiring in-person advising might seem reasonable, but for some students without transportation or with childcare constraints, it is a barrier. Okay? So using equity data, Lane can then define outcomes by student demographics and really define and determine where there's equity or a lack of equity in decision-making within those outcomes. It does take more time. It requires more thoughtfulness, but it is par for the course within your oversight and governance role. Okay? We can go to the next slide. How much time do I have left? I want to be mindful of time.
Yeah, like three-ish minutes, but yeah, yeah.
We're moving forward. Okay? So let's see here. Let's move a couple of slides further to forty-one. Next one. There we go. So when we think about accountability mechanisms, I have a board code of conduct that you all should have within your packets that you can reference and sign as a means of intentionality going forward. So it's very clear standards of expectations as a board member. There will be a board self-assessment that I will share with President Bulger that she can share with each of you in regards to what you've learned tonight, recognizing the, the boundaries and what's appropriate and not, and how you're holding yourself accountable to that, as well as your peers on the board. Your accountability, so understanding how do appropriately address concerns with your peers, enforcing leadership through the board chair, consequences for violations and the presidential partnership assessment that I'll provide her as well. Okay? And then as I'll just, as you'll see in a few weeks, the assessment process is about psychological safety and respecting of the culture, compliance to legal and ethical standards and overall board effectiveness. And then your individual commitment as you have within your packet is really thinking about, it's not just about the board, but each of you that compiles is the composite of the board. Recognizing that if you've been crossing boundaries into management, what is your relative commitment? If you've been undermining board decisions, what is your new commitment and so on? So whatever it is, name it, own it and commit to changing it. And then establish accountability to how you're going to insist and perpetuate that new accountability measure. So what happens next quickly is again, today you have your individual action plans. You'll sign that board code of conduct and commit to accountability processes. You should have those in your packets. Yes? Okay?
I'm counting.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Um, in the next four to six weeks, um, you can put those commitments into practice starting tomorrow. Right? So continue to build the behavior, complete that board assessment. And then I'll work with President Bulger regarding that presidential partnership assessment. And then you will all have the ongoing adherence to those standards you defined for yourself and really live that board culture that models the excellence that we've defined in regards to an inclusive and considered lens. Right? So again, if you see something, say something. We've heard this all before. So if you witness or learn of harassment or discrimination, bias or exclusionary conduct, bring it forward in a called in way. You must interrupt in the moment. If you are complicit, if you say nothing, you are supporting it to continue. Report it to the board chair, document what you observe so you have that sense of context. And it's not just hearsay because our minds can play tricks on us, but do not also participate in that conduct as well. So final commitments, if you can go forward a little bit forward, please. And you will have this deck so you can go back to all of the other comments and content. One next more, please. Yes, there we go. Um, so what you're agreeing to today, understanding your legal obligations under title seven, knowing your boundaries between governance and management. You commit to governing through an equity and inclusion lens, treating all individuals with respect and professionalism, holding yourself and your colleagues accountable to the high standards of excellence as it means to be on this board, supporting the president's authority while fulfilling oversight duties, interrupting bias and inappropriate conduct when it is observed in the moment, completing your action plan and code of conduct and recognizing that your conduct affects the situation and the students that you serve. Okay? So I'll leave you with one quote. Um, the next slide, please. Nicole, is the function of leadership is to produce more leaders, not more followers. And as a leader, you and of yourself are a follower. You are in service-oriented position for those that you are responsible for. Okay? And so last, last slide, I promise you, your role is to set the tone for the culture of the organization, model the values you want to see, make decisions that serve all students and hold yourself to the highest standards because the community is looking to you to uphold the mission and the values of this organization. The students are counting you to have their best interests at mind and that is the expectation of this board. So that is what I have for you. I thank you for the extra few minutes and that's what I have. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, is that?
Yes.
Might have some follow-up questions they can send after, but can you just speak a little bit more to that idea[1717.88] But can you just speak a little bit more to that idea of calling people in and what that would look like in the board context?
Definitely. So when we think about calling someone out, right? Just think of like, hey, you didn't do something right. You automatically get defensive. You're like, help me understand the behavior about why that happened. And it's more of a, it's more of an engagement conversation to help learn versus putting someone on the other side of the table. So it's more where you're bringing someone together with you to create more of that shared learning opportunity versus an, you know, kind of an ostracized opposites sort of situation. So it really is, when you think about bringing someone into a group and having that conversation, you can say it's you're calling someone in. When you're calling them out, you're essentially pushing them out, making them feel othered. So there's a different approach of how you could address that situation. Does that help a little bit?
That's great. Thank you.
Perfect, of course.
Awesome.
Yes, Amelia.
Um, if I may add to that, one way of looking at it that I personally feel is a, a good way of looking at, at least for me, is giving them the space and place to speak for themselves instead of calling them out and saying, hey, you did this. You're directing your words at them. You're saying, no. Can you direct your words at me? Tell me more, instead of having, having to have them explain why they did it in a flustered way where they feel defensive.
Yep. So again, a lot of times it's, it's when you think about courageous conversations as a framework, you're talking about the, the actual facts of what occurred with, and by removing your inferred story around it so that you can then share your feelings from an eye perspective versus pushing someone on the opposite side as more of a defensive position. Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, once again, thank you so much. Uh, I've said this before, you know, it's not just students who can learn uh, here at this institution. I feel the board has learned so a lot. I hope the community also who's gets to watch this also learns something from this. And also we have a board member who's not here. Uh, I hope we can figure out a way to make sure materials get to them as well as ask any questions they might have as well.
That'd be great. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Chair, I, I just wanted to also say, I want to thank Samantha Maldonado for coming this evening. And I also want to thank the board. I know this was imposed on the board, but really appreciate the board having the courage to do this. Um, I also want Samantha to check in with the board. On the board member code of conduct, she's asking every board member to sign that. And I want to check in, have her check in with the board members individually to make sure that the board members are comfortable doing that.
Absolutely.
Uh, you can do that now. Samantha is not actually physically coming back, even though we have a, we, she has an outline of activities, I believe, um, through, over the next several weeks, but she, you, we will not have her presence here anymore. Um, and so I just want her to check in with the board members to see if the board uh, is comfortable signing this code of conduct. You can do that this evening, and we can make copies for you and get that to you afterwards. But I, I want her to check in with you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, happy to answer any questions.
And maybe I misheard. I thought we were to do the activities and then sign. Did I mishear that?
No, the code of conduct would be now.
Oh, okay.
And you would put the learnings into practice and activities moving forward.
Understood. Thank you so much for that, Claire.
Yes, yes.
I think we should talk about adding something about calling people in to our, uh, I don't know if it's our board member code of conduct, or I think we have board operating agreements. Uh, but I think just having that respect for our fellow board members to uh, try and have those conversations respectfully uh, and try and call, you know, call, call people in and so that is something that we should try and practice as a board. I don't see it in here. I don't, I haven't seen it in our board operating agreements. I think it's something we should come back to and potentially add at some point, but I don't have any problems with what is in here. I just want to think it's something that we should add.
Absolutely.
Does the number five, the last bullet, it seems to capture that to me, but I don't know about to you.
I would also state that the, um, communication, respectful communication statement from the college. I think there's a spirit of that calling in as opposed to calling out. Um, but yeah, I do like, I do like that. It's, it's a dynamic change, right? You know, it's, that's what it's made of. Exactly. Yeah, precisely. Yeah, so I like that.
If I could also say, Chair, that the respectful community statement, which is a Y statement, that's the college's statement, but it's not the board's statement.
True, true.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now moving on to the closing items, which is board member questions and comments. Uh, Jerry.
Yes. Excuse me. I think many of you know Sandy Cutler, and we've been kicking around an idea for a few weeks. And it has to do with what we're calling the Blue Sky Committee. Meaning there, we want to see a group of people get together and talk about possible new revenue scenarios for the college. And nothing is off the table, just, uh, and I'd like to turn to the, and I'd like to see if we could get a committee going. Um, and I'd like to turn to the president and to the chair to see if that's possible, if you have any comments about that.
Um, I have a comment about that. If I understand what you're saying, um, there's a board policy related to committees for the board, if that's what, if I understand what you're saying. And there's actually a history to that. We don't have time this evening, I think, to talk about all of that. Uh, but there is a history, uh, related to this board and its creation of committees. So maybe that's something that I can share with the board afterwards. Um, I'll just let you know that when I came into the institution, there were not standing committees.
Yeah. Uh, but just to clarify, Jerry, you're asking for a conversation and consideration of such a committee? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'd like to see it get going. I mean, I, I think there's a bunch of good ideas out there. And some of them may bear fruit. Um, I'm sure there'll be a lot of pie in the sky. I've been on a lot of wild goose chases, but there might be a few good ideas and, and so the idea is, how do we best get this off the ground and have a report back to the board eventually on, uh, and the president on the ideas?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I would also say, um, I'm not sure exactly what ideas you may be referring to, but, um, at the last meeting, the board approved my goals. And that is what I am focused on, and that's what the college is focused on. And so if you want to, if the board wants to revisit those goals, I would, um, ask you not to do that, actually. But, um, because we're off and running and we don't have very much time to actually, um, accomplish the goals that I have this year. That, um, I can certainly talk to board members individually, um, in twos to talk about what your ideas are. Um, I'm just not sure what you're, what you're getting at. But, um, if those are going to change my goals, then we should know now.
No, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is just a board member asking, hey, could we consider uh, a committee potentially? Um, uh, heard and noted, um, President Bulger, I think this is a great opportunity for having a discussion. Is this, is there possibilities there? Uh, certainly not in reference to, um, uh, the goals necessarily, but it's in reference to, um, because we've been talking a lot about cuts, right? As, and not necessarily about revenue streams. And that is, uh, and so that's what I'm hearing, that's at least what I'm hearing. You tell me if I'm absolutely wrong, Jerry. Uh, but what I'm hearing is that you would like to potentially have a committee to create ideas to present to the board. Now, I, I would say that, uh, something like this would be need to be brought back to the board to have further discussion of creating such a committee. But for now, though, heard and noted, and I'll work with the president, and we'll work with the president to see what can be done about that, so.
Well, I, I would just say that, um, it sounds a little bit like operations, but if what you're, because I, as we were just went through this 90 minutes of, of training, and, um, it doesn't sound like policy to me. Um, it doesn't sound like the what. It sounds like the how. Um, and, um, so I would like to talk about it more before we even talk about a committee of the board generating ideas that's separate and distinct from the operations of the college, which is why I brought up my goals.
Absolutely. I agree. I agree, President Bulger. Yeah. Uh, any other questions, comments? Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to thank President Bulger for, screwed up your name. President Bulger.
At the lateness of the hour, I'm sure of it.
Uh, for arranging Samantha to be here this evening. 90 minutes is just not a doable thing for such a topic. But I appreciated, uh, the information and I found myself, you know, kind of interested in more. So that was a win, and I appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other board questions, comments? Oh, yes.
I would like to add to that. Uh, thank you so much for coming and presenting on this. I personally learned a lot as someone who aspires, not always implements, but aspires to monitor their personal bias and implied bias and unconscious bias. Um, is really a wake-up call to me because as a student representative, I should be representing all students and aspiring to reach out to every single student. So thank you.
Amazing. All right. I, I think there's no better way to end the, the meeting on that than with that. Uh, future, uh, board meeting dates, uh, November 5th. We don't have a work session scheduled for November or December, and with that, we are adjourned.